One Nation Under God, Indivisible, Liberty, Justice, and Fairness.
Thank you.
Mr. Peters?
Present.
Mr. LaScavva?
Here.
Mr. Lombardo?
Here.
Mr. McDermott?
Here.
Mr. McGinley?
Present.
Mr. Mitchell?
Here.
Mr. Perry?
Here.
Mr. Thornton?
Here.
Mr. Urban?
Here.
Mr. Willoughby?
Here.
Here.
All present.
Any deletions? We have a motion to adopt the agenda?
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Abstentions? Opposed? Agenda is adopted. We have a couple of comments on voting session. Agenda items. Jamie Walsh?
Jamie Walsh from Reston Township. I just wanted to, I know there's a motion on to not allow a raise for Beth Ellen McBride and Emily Cook. And I strongly support that. Furthermore, I don't understand why they're even still in their positions even being considered for a race due to the last election that happened here in Luzerne County. And we still have absolutely no resolution on what happened here. We haven't had any of our questions answered. This is going on over a month now. And even the consideration of her having a raise, her or Emily Cook having a raise, is ridiculous. Furthermore, they should be fired. And yet, here we sit. If this happened in the private sector, they wouldn't even have been able to clean out their desk. But here we sit, over a month later, still deciding on whether to give these people a raise? This is outrageous. And I don't know who's protecting her, or them, or what's going on. But they need to be, they need to be let go. They shouldn't even be on the agenda to approve or deny a race. Can we get some of our questions answered as to what transpired during this election? Everybody in this room acts like it's over, and we're just gonna move on.
It's agenda items only, so stick to the budget amendments, please.
I, I am. It's, it's about budget amendment item, whether to give them a race. And we still don't have questions answered, Mrs. Rado. You don't have the authority to blanket this and cover it. We want answers. And the answers start by getting rid of those two and investigate what happened. That's all I have.
Sure. Was there an investigation going on?
There is an investigation.
There is an investigation going on.
Yeah. We, our priority today is we have to get through budget amendments. We have to pass a budget. So it's not being swept under the rug. There is an ongoing investigation. There will be a time and a place to discuss the election and the events that occurred. But we have to pass the budget by Thursday. There are council members here that wanna, that would like no tax increase. We're still at 5.25, so we have a lot of work to do regarding the budget. Mr. Dwyer?
Right, Dwyer, part two. Thank you for that statement, Mrs. Rado. No one wants to see a tax increase. And that's not the purpose of why I'm up here to speak. I echo my fellow citizens' remarks. I'm not pointing a finger at anybody, but in all honesty, what happened during the election was unacceptable. And to submit a budget request for pay raises for that department is unconscionable. You know, there's no getting around it. There was a problem. It wasn't a small problem, it was a large problem, it was a big problem, made in national news. And I, I don't see how any member of council put in good conscience votes to adopt the budget that was submitted for that department with the pay raises. You know, they need a budget, so the whole county needs a budget, I get that, and I'm glad that you guys are working on it. But that particular issue and that department needs to be addressed. Thank you.
Tom Dombrowski? Okay, sure. Greg Griffin?
Council members, public. Greg Griffin, Forestville. I know we're agenda item number one, it's contract with Trinity Service Groups for inmate meals. And that's in line with the budget. And I know council has done a hard, tough job. Line item, line by line, trying to cut costs so we don't have a tax. They've even talked about office supply. Oh, come on. We have the prison over there, that big building, it's filled with 557 inmates. A lot of problems. It's the biggest budget item. And I heard they're, they're asking for two more million, which would be 31 million. But we have no questions to council. We have questions about office supplies, top solider, we force how we can cut down with the armed office, even body bags. Our council member asked, well, how long are the body bags? I mean, still no questions on what's going on in that huge building up there. We have another lawsuit, young lady lost her life over there. Besides compassion, this enormous cost to the taxpayers, we've got a lot of inmates die over there. A lot of executives, session, seven lawsuits. That's the taxpayers' interest too. And we hear nothing about it. What's going on at the prison? Healthcare, staff training, hospital treatment, staffing costs, staffing jobs. We're a member of NACO, National Association of County Organizations. I think it's 3500, they have a crack team of specialists that will come in and examine your prison. Now, and I talked this up many times. Not one council member, this budget session, is asking for, let's have an outside organization come in and investigate and find out what's going on so we can run a prison more efficiently, more compassionately, at less cost. Not one council member is asking for NACO to come in. We may as well drop this $3,500 a year dues. What are they, what are they going for us? So if the council's gonna vote for a tax increase, will one council member at least say, I'll vote for a tax increase, but I want an investigation?
Thank you. Mr. Knapp, confirming yours is non-agenda?
Non-agenda.
Got it. Mr. Griffin?
I have the agenda items on number two, budget amendments. And the only, but I already spoke to the acting board to talk shop on my item number one, so I won't even bring that up to council. Item number two, the only concern I have on item number two for budget amendments is we still need to consider, the Ace Commission has no budget. I said it last week. And I looked at the budget amendments submitted so far, I didn't see anything in there. I know that's, it's just a matter of switching money from one department to the other, but the money's actually being paid from. But I think it's something council needs to address, so the Ace Commission money is being taken to the right division as opposed to the wrong division. So if council can look at that before Thursday, that would be helpful. To the other speakers who spoke about the issue with the employees from the Election Bureau, Mr. Lombardo did in fact, would have put in there to take that pay raise away. So if you look at your budget's middle, you'll see an $8,000 reduction. Were those pay raises that we discussed last week, or the other day? Kudos to Mr. Lombardo for doing that. I think they need to go further and take the merit raise portion of that fine item away as well. So that we know that there's not gonna be a 2% raise at some point along the way for those non-represented employees. Council needs to take that money out of the budget as well. And if the investigation comes back and there's nothing, you know, no reason that you can't give the merit raise, then certainly council can go ahead and reverse that if they'd like. But I think a clear message to the people in this county is that we're taking that possibility of a raise away temporarily until we get results from the investigation. I think that's appropriate. The other issue, when I sent council an email about the $40 cell phone reimbursement that management gets, and I did speak to council members. I guess there's a policy out there somewhere about that $40, I don't remember that. But if there is in fact a way to take that away, council needs to do that. Taxpayers is counting two, more with less. Yeah, more with less. Then I think it's appropriate for us to use same county employees who are making $80,000 a year to $40 to use their personal cell phone. I think that's fair. So I know it's nickels and dimes, but it's the principle of the issue that you need to address as a council, as well as the financial matters for county. So just consider those items, if you would. When you do that, the merit raise for the elections, the Ace Commission budget, and the removal of the $40, I appreciate it very much. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Griffin. And Robin Cochran, just confirming that's non-agenda? Okay, sure. That is all the clips. I have any other members of the public that wish to speak on agenda items only? Okay, Mr. Raybo has his hand up, or actually just says Mark, so maybe it's not Mark Raybo, but I don't wanna say.
Madam Chair, this is Mark Raybo speaking from Hazleton. First of all, I find it at the amazingly ignorant, to the height of political snobbery, that county council would actually consider giving any raise to the Election Bureau administration when they should be getting not only a merit, not even a merit raise, but also a salary cut for the disgraceful performance in last month's election. I would like to remind you, and especially the acting county manager, Mr. Swetz, and his division heads, they are required to enforce the Home Rule Charter and the County Personnel Code. If the, if acting county manager Swetz and the division heads fail to uphold, hold any employees responsible for the poor performance, and especially egregious incompetence, or if the district attorney finds out the election chaos was intentional, then it's criminal negligence, then they are bound to sanction and terminate those people who conducted the election that led to the disenfranchisement of voters being turned away at the polls. This issue has nothing to do with the political affiliation nor identity politics. This has everything to do with constitutional rights of Luzerne County residents. If the county manager and the county division heads refuse to perform their duties under the charter and the county, county personnel code, they are by definition committing dereliction of duty, which is grounds for termination also. It isn't asking much to do your jobs as, as your public officials who work for the people who are paying taxes that pay your salaries to give to friends and political family members. Madam Chair, do I have to remind you again to read in entirety and verbatim recommendation why the Home Rule Study Commission said that Luzerne County must change to Home Rule Government? If county council doesn't care about the raises it gives through our tax money given away to political friends and family members such as your college friend Beth Gilbert McBride, then I guess you should practice reading the seventh recommendation by the Government Study Commission again for the final budget meeting this Tuesday, next Tuesday, or this Thursday to the public. I sincerely hope you reject not only the merit raise, but also the cut the salary of those election office employees. Sincerely, the anti-corruption advocate from Hazleton, yours truly, Mark Raybo. Thank you very much.
Claudia Glennon?
Sorry, took me a minute to unmute. I'm Claudia Glenn in Salem Township. First, I, I'd like to acknowledge the intensive, detailed, and I know quite difficult tasks that county council members have in reviewing, balancing, and implementing the county budget. I don't envy you this undertaking. The budget addresses, I know, the most critical issues facing our county. I would ask, is it possible for council to revisit the use of L.A. LSA funds that could be used countywide vice all the money that's being put into one bridge? And that may possibly offset the proposed property tax increases. I know bringing businesses to the area is important, but enticing businesses through tax incentives, i.e. corporate welfare, doesn't help the rest of the residents. And I also hope that in your reviewing process, that you do give due consideration to the offices that, that express greater need, not lesser need, in the budget that addressed council during the last session. That's all that I have, thank you. And I know you have a tough job.
Thank you. Ian Kennedy?
Hello?
Yes, just say the name of the municipality you reside in.
Ian Kennedy, Dallas Township.
Thank you.
I am commenting today on one of the agenda, agenda items, merit raises for the Election Bureau. I don't think that they deserve them, partly because of the mistakes that were made. We don't know if they were intentional or not, but they were mistakes. And when you have friends and family throughout the country, talk to you and ask you, say, what happened in your county? You know, there were paper shortages, what's going on with that? And especially, you know, someone, being a, being a poll worker, and seeing firsthand, you know, the people that did get disenfranchised, I saw it firsthand, to say that, that, that didn't happen, that's not true, it did happen. Um, that's negligence. And whether it's, again, whether it's intentional or not, it's still negligence. And why would someone be rewarded for that? I mean, that alone has nothing to do with any kind of partisan politics. I mean, it's just, it's ridiculous to me. I don't see people in the private sector get raises for doing, for doing things that, you know, we're not, we're not up to standard, e- even, even below standard. So that's wrong. And the second thing I want to talk about is taxes. We're in the middle of an inflationary period, and our economy's not doing too well. And people pop, people's, people don't have the money like they had a few years ago, especially before COVID. And you're gonna raise taxes, so you're gonna put more burden on them with inflation that we already have. I mean, what is going through your, what is going through the, the minds of county council to do that? I mean, that's just, to me, I just, I, I just think that's, that's ludicrous. Um, so that's wrong. A- and I, I personally believe in limited government. I mean, I don't know why we're, we're constantly, you know, it seems like, you know, good or bad, we're always raising taxes, you know, whether it happens on a local level, a state level, or even a federal level. It seems like people are so, always quick to grab the money. I, I don't understand, like, why are we not, why are we not looking towards other, other things? Other ways, you know, to make the quality of life better? I mean, because that's ultimately your job as county council, you serve the people. So you should be making the quality of life better for the people in Luzerne County, not worse. And by raising taxes, you're making it worse. And you could say, well, it makes things better, but I've lived in this county my whole life, growing up, and I could tell you that any of the tax increases that you might have had had not made anything better since I've been alive. So, you know, don't, so that's, that, that can't be, that can't be a, an argument or, or something to stand on. I would definitely think about what you're, what you're, what you plan on doing. And I would definitely recommend that you start work, doing more with less, getting in, in that mindset, you know, because we have to hunker down here and really, really start taking care of, you know, things. And not, not just, you know, writing blank checks and just saying, you know, we could pay for this and pay for that and do this and do that. It just, it's ridiculous to me. So that's all I wanted to say, thank you.
Thank you. Vivian Kragler?
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Hi, this is Vivian Kragler-Lacina from Nesscafe Township. Two, two things on the agenda items. I don't see areas to the Bureau workers. They proved without a shadow of a doubt their issue, and they shouldn't be rewarded for, say, bad behavior. Okay? So I have to say on that. But my next question is about the taxes. And I know yous are working very hard to make, to try and get it that there would be no tax increase. So a quick question for you, and then I can tell you what my suggestion might be, and yous can ponder on it, think about it. Any money coming in for taxes is automatically put into the county, correct? Hello?
Automatically put into what?
Like, put into the county, it comes back to the county. So everybody pays their, their taxes. The money is put into a, is it put into a separate account? Or is it put into, I, I don't wanna say general fund, but the money is there to use for different things that's needed, correct?
Yes.
Okay. So my suggestion is, and I did talk to some people, and, you know, they thought it was possibly a good idea. What is the harm to walk over to the tax office and ask how much the property taxes are for each person in Luzerne County? That $10 million, you wanna go put somewhere, whether it be at CEO or any other course. It's, my, the tax office and say, okay, maybe nobody will have taxes, nobody will have property taxes in March. But then that money is right back into the county, so it can be reused for something else. That's all I have to say. It's just a suggestion, it's a suggestion to yous. Thank you.
Thank you. And any other members of the public that wish to speak on agenda items only? Okay, moving on. Motion to approve the minutes?
Just by my shirt. I mean, I did speak to Mr. Griffin today. Talked about the cell phone situation. Number, yeah, and there was different. So I don't believe there's any cell phone policy in the county. I think there's been like a hundred, thing going all the way back to the first manager. And I said to Mr. Griffin, we need, we need by source. I think council has that right to have a cell phone policy. Right now, if we get through the budget in January, that could be something on our agendas to get there.
Sure, thank you. Okay, do we have a motion to approve the minutes of the November 29th?
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Abstentions? Oppose?
No.
It's our adopted. Agenda item number one, motion to adopt resolution authorizing the county manager to execute a contract with Trinity Services Group for inmate meals and kitchen operations management.
So moved. Second.
Motion by Mr. McGinley, second by Mr. Lombardo, roll call, please.
I'm the question. Is that for one year?
Do you wanna speak to it?
Yes, Rob, I'm here.
Okay.
Additional contracts, we have options to review for additional.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, roll call.
Mr. Peters?
Yes.
Mr. LaScavva?
Yes.
Mr. Lombardo?
Yes.
Mr. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. McGinley?
Yes.
Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Thornton?
Yes.
Mr. Urban?
Yes.
Mr. Willoughby?
Yes.
Mrs. Rado?
Yes. Motion passes. Okay, so number two are our motions regarding budget amendments. So council, we'll start with, on the top of our packet is Mr. McGinley's. And then I believe right below it, Mr. McGinley, you can correct me if I'm wrong, the conflict council one, is that, that's yours as well?
Oh, yeah, that's something.
Sure, no, I just wanna make sure we have all yours together, okay? Hold on. Just hold on one second. It's this.
Oh.
Off to this. You, uh, let's see, does anyone have any questions on them? And then Mr. McGinley can speak to them if he have questions, because I don't wanna vote for everyone if everyone's clear on it. Any questions for Mr. McGinley? No questions? Do you guys wanna bundle these together, or do you wanna vote on each amendment separately? Just?
I'm actually here to address the district attorney's budget, I don't know where in the agenda you want to do that.
No, we have the district attorney's four positions that we talked about. None of the other issues, eh?
Yeah, I did submit a memo to everyone, I know you got it late, but I only got given this this morning, so we all did it.
This is on, this is, his amendment is, your amendment is on here regarding Fund 100 wages represented.
Just for the four positions?
Yes.
That, two were those, well, requested for opioid money, two from their congressional.
Yes.
We have, we don't have a decision on either one of them yet, so. I don't think you should put in the budget, we do get a decision later on, I explained that to Mr. Samuel Don't you here yesterday. Be happy to submit a budget amendment to the, to that one.
Okay, council members. Do you wanna take maybe revenue first and then the expenses? Okay. What, do we have a motion to accept the budget amendments for revenue? So those top two?
I'll make that.
Second.
Roll call?
Mr. LaScavva?
Yes.
Mr. Lombardo?
Yes.
Mr. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. McGinley?
Yes.
Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Thornton?
Yes.
Mr. Urban?
Yes.
Mr. Willoughby?
Yes.
Mr. Peters?
Yes.
Mrs. Rado?
Yes.
Okay, next we'll take expenses, so that's Fund 100, healthcare reserve fund, wages represented. You have a motion?
Motion. Second.
Roll call?
Mr. Lombardo?
Yes.
Mr. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. McGinley?
Yes.
Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Thornton?
Yeah.
Mr. Urban?
Yes.
Mr. Willoughby?
Yes.
Mr. Peters?
Yes.
Mr. LaScavva?
Yes.
Mrs. Rado?
Yes.
And then this attached one, we'll vote on this one next, it was submitted by Mr. McGinley.
The district attorney was taking care of the, the, the.
No, we included that.
That's fine.
Yeah, yeah, I, I definitely, wages represented, that was included. Okay, so the next one was budget for conflict council reduced. Does everybody have that?
Yes, just a single page.
Yep. And then Attorney DeLuca has requested the budget returned to the previous amount.
Your count.
We can't hear you.
Can you hear me? Last year's budget, Brian, was about 1.1 million. Okay? Previous manager cut certain things in that budget down to 832, 318, okay? If you look in the position budget, there's a lot of blank lines there. Attorney DeLuca said that, you know, based on the staffing and based on the contracts they have, he has some stories on the contract. In order for him to be able to fund what they're doing, he would like to have no less than $1,050,000. I've spoken with Mr. Swetz, and he said he believes at least $180,000 should be added back into the budget. Now, $180,000 would take you to just over the $1,032,318. Yeah, so, okay, I just quickly do the math here. Yep. 1.101, let me get my dandy dandy calculator right here. 1101, 932. 832. Well, the original 1101, 932? Yes, oh, yeah, I'm sorry, I'm looking at the next number there. Minus 832, 318. So the previous manager proposed a cut of 269, 614. Right. And then the second paragraph, Attorney DeLuca wanted to return to the previous amount, which would be 1.1 million, right? Yeah, but then the second paragraph, the second sentence. Swetz said.
180 should be added to, I'm giving our, interrupt you, I'm sorry, 180 to 832?
Yep.
So that would take us to
A little.
A little over a million.
A little less than the minimum.
$1,012,318.
Is that what it is? Right.
Could we?
There is a debt cut then? Yes. From 1.101 to 1.012, okay? Still less than last year, that increase from what was presented. Right. And I would note that that cuts more than 5%, which we had talked about earlier on in the budget process, to ask people for 5%.
Okay, so this is all laid out in front of us. What's your amendment to be the 1, 1,012,000?
Based on Mr. Swetz's recommendation, I'd 1,012,312.
Which would be $180,000 amendment?
Correct.
Okay.
So that, that budget would be what, as Rado said, 1,012,318?
Yes.
That's what we would be approving.
Yes.
Which is still a cut from last year, but Yeah. Of about 90,000? Yeah. Yeah, yeah, just about, okay.
Do you have a motion?
Just, I have no question, are there line items for this?
I do, it's all one line item, it's 100.16, 4154, 550, 15, so it's all contractual services in conflict. 250,000, 63,000. And this is separate from everything else.
Yeah, we'll vote on this separately.
Yeah.
Yep. So do we have a motion for just this?
And you got to remember, the conflict council is really a subset of the PDs.
Okay.
And we all got the same letter.
Right.
So I think it would be who was to try to meet the needs.
Right.
Excuse me?
It also has to do with parents' council.
That's right, there's a Parents Advisor Council.
Parents Council, children.
Which is another area that we got to make sure we're trying to do the right things, right?
Alright, so we have a motion by Mr. McGinnley. Give a second, roll call.
Ms. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. McGinnley?
Yes.
Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Thornton?
Yes.
Mr. Urban?
Yes.
Mr. Willoughby?
Yes.
Mr. Venus?
Yes.
Mr. Loscavich?
Yes.
Mr. Lombardo?
Yes.
Ms. Rado?
Yes. Okay, next we have Lee Ann's budget amendments, I'll give council a second to get there, it's all with a highlight yellow on it. Does anybody have any questions? For Ms. McDermott?
So this, this amendment for the engineering architecture is an amendment to Tim's amendment from last week?
Yes.
Okay.
He had proposed an amendment, 100,000, and I would like to decrease that to 50,000. For the, again, the possible return of selling the Butler Township property, having a survey and a subdivision done on 29 acres. We could possibly sell off 146 acres, the appraised value back in 2018 was $867,000. At this point, the property is probably worth more, the, everything scheduled to go, a survey can be completed as early as May of 2023. A subdivision can be, can be completed by July of 2023, and the sale of the property can be as early as the fourth quarter of next year. Again, spending a little bit, what it comes down to, $20,000 more for that line item, with a potential of $1 million of income for next year.
Okay, do we have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Mr. Venus, you're a second, or Matt?
Is this, just that one, the operational services engineers, or is it include the one above?
It really is for the operational services, because again, Tim had made the budget amendment of 100,000, I'd like to decrease that to 50,000, so it is for.
This is just, this is just your operate, the engineers, right?
Right.
Okay.
Yes, I'm sorry.
Just this one? Is that what your motion was, where it was just engineers?
Yes.
And your second, just engineers?
Yeah.
Okay, we have, do a roll call on just that second one there. Mr. McGinnley?
Oh, sorry, yes.
Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Thornton?
Yes.
Mr. Urban?
Yes.
Mr. Willoughby?
Yes.
Mr. Venus?
Yes.
Mr. Loscavich?
Yes.
Mr. Lombardo?
Yes.
Mr. McDermott?
Yes.
Ms. Rado?
Yes. Okay, now we have Division 50 Operational Services Department 4310 Road and Bridge, do you have a motion for that one?
Um, I think both of us propose this same.
Yeah. Okay, so someone, just anybody make a motion.
Okay, so move.
Okay, thanks. Roll call.
Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Thornton?
Yes.
Mr. Urban?
Yes.
Mr. Willoughby?
Yes.
Mr. Venus?
Yes.
Mr. Loscavich?
Yes.
Mr. Lombardo?
Yes.
Mr. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. McGinnley?
Yes.
Ms. Rado?
Yes. Alright, moving on to the Venus amendments, but that first, the second one, we already, we just did that, so you got to cross that one out, so it's just the one for special legal?
And I made this one last week as well, you know, the two that I pulled off last week, so.
Okay, so you're making a motion?
I would make the motion for the special legal services in the solicitors, and it is the 2023 proposed budget, but it was by 50, the amendments to 500, it's a $50,000.
Okay, so we have a motion, do we have a second?
So moved. Second.
Ms. McDermott got it first.
Okay.
Sorry, Mr. McGinnley, roll call.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Ms. Rado? Excuse me, Mr. Thornton?
Yes.
Mr. Urban?
Yes.
Mr. Willoughby?
Yes.
Mr. Venus?
Yes.
Mr. Loscavich?
Yes.
Mr. Lombardo?
Yes.
Mr. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. McGinnley?
Yes.
Mr. Mitchell?
Ms. Rado?
Yes. Okay, next we have actually, do we, Mr. Willoughby, do you care if we save yours for last, because John's are a little bit shorter?
Yeah.
Okay, so we have Mr. Lombardo's budget amendments. Elections, wages, road and bridge maintenance, and budget finance assessors meeting conference training. Did anybody have any questions?
On the question, is there any members for the associated payroll taxes for election wages? I mean, I know it's really big, but I might only give you $2, but it's.
Yeah, well, not for tonight, but definitely for Thursday, yeah.
That's why these are.
What was your, what was your question?
Because of payroll taxes, along with decreasing wages.
Can't, I don't know what the.
Okay, so let's get a motion in a second, do you want to do all three of them together or separate?
Can we just do them separate, just because I just want to explain the wrong bridge one more.
Sure, so, want to do the elections first?
Yes.
Alright, so you make the motion?
So moved.
Venus.
Okay. Roll call.
Mr. Thornton?
That includes, I have a question. That 8,000 savings includes savings on every salary in the election bureau?
This was, this was the department head's budget submission for the bureau, which didn't include the $8,000 raise that the manager. So we're, Ms. McGinnley and I were having a side conversation about the merit increase as well, but that, that does not include this, is not included in this as of right now. We can obviously change that, but that's not, that's not what this includes right now, I don't have that number.
Okay.
If you have that number, I'm happy to, I'm happy to change that.
Well, can we, can we just vote on this one first, and then if you want to, or is it the whole, because it's a separate?
So this item does not, we're not discussing merit raises here in this item?
No, it's the actual salary and this will only should have taxes to.
Okay, let's just.
No, let's show a way.
No, no, we can, we can just vote on that, and then we'll do that as a separate one if we want to.
Okay, alright, so this is just the $8,000 reduction. Okay, so we have a motion in a second, we have a roll call on that, just this one.
Mr. Thornton?
Yes.
Mr. Urban?
Yes.
Mr. Willoughby?
Yes.
Mr. Venus?
Yes.
Mr. Loscavich?
Yes.
Mr. Lombardo?
Yes.
Yes. Mr. McGinnley?
Yes.
Mr. Mitchell? Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Ms. Rado?
Yes. Do you want to find that?
I think we really changed to 2%, you can just make a motion to change to 0.
Okay, well, I'll make that motion, that to change, what is it, what's the number?
51016.
51016 in that same line area, from where it may just, wages merit increase from 2% to 0.
I'll second that, that's the election bureau.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
Wages merit increase from 2% to 0. And it's 51016?
Yes.
Alright, just. Okay, so we have a motion in a second, we have a roll call on that.
Mr. Urban?
Yes.
Mr. Willoughby?
Yes.
Mr. Venus?
Yes.
Mr. Loscavich?
Yes.
Mr. Lombardo?
Yes.
Mr. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. McGinnley?
Yes.
Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Thornton?
Yes.
Ms. Rado?
Yes. Okay, so next we have the road and bridge maintenance, do we have a motion? You could speak to it in a second.
Okay, so moved.
I'll second.
Okay, go.
So just on, on the question, I did have a discussion with several council members, I put this back on, it's a different amendment than it was last week. So we'll be changing the line to $200,000, which is what it was previously, which will be a savings of $800,000, with the caveat that after this is all said and done, we will take $1 million of ARP funds and stick it into that line item, so technically, they'll be getting a $200,000 increase in that line from what they actually asked for.
So that would just, it'll increase, it'll be coming from a different.
It'll be coming from ARP.
And not from a tax.
Yes, okay.
Yes. We have a motion in a second, we have a roll call on that.
Mr. Willoughby?
Yes.
Mr. Venus?
Yes.
Mr. Loscavich?
Yes.
Mr. Lombardo?
Yes.
Mr. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. McGinnley?
Yes.
Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Thornton?
Yes.
Mr. Urban?
Yes.
Ms. Rado?
Yes. Motion passes, the last one for Mr. Lombardo's budget finance assessors meeting conference training.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Venus?
Yes.
Mr. Loscavich?
Yes.
Mr. Lombardo?
Yes.
Mr. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. McGinnley?
Yes.
Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Thornton?
Yes.
Mr. Urban?
Yes.
Mr. Willoughby?
Yes.
Ms. Rado?
Yes. Okay, we'll move on to Mr. Willoughby's amendments. Yeah.
Alright, so as you can tell, I went through this line by line. Okay, so first for general government county council, last week we voted to decrease the wages director nonrepresented by 22,000. We also have to put along with the related payroll expenses, which is the first three lines, then 15 and 20. There's also other contractual in there that has not been used, and we'll cut that down to 1,500. And also miscellaneous expenses that has not been utilized, it's $500, and we're going to reduce that to nothing, so that is for $3,983. Can I make a motion?
Second. On the question? Somebody, you, go ahead.
So Greg, I just want to confirm with regards to your dropping that miscellaneous, is the miscellaneous expense?
Yes.
Have we used that in the past at any point?
Miscellaneous expense, since 2019, we have used $0.
Okay, alright, thank you.
Mr. McGinnley?
Yes, other contractual.
Yes.
I'm sure I picked this up before, I'm sorry, I just really noticed now, $3,000, that money was supposed to be to the codification.
Okay.
So, you know, that's been something that's been lingering out there for several years now, so. You want to cut to 1,500, but know that, you know, that expense can come in.
We can come back and ask ourselves a bit.
Yeah, I'm just, so it's noted that that's the reason I'm speaking there.
Any questions, Jim?
Yeah, I actually have a question. Since we've been doing this and not codifying, can't we just cut that to 0 for now, like we're, since things are so tight right now?
I mean, I'd be fine to take that in reserve in the future.
We'll have to put it back eventually, and it, codification at this point, that's an old, that's an old, that's an old number, 3,000.
We need to get that done.
It's going to be a lot more than that.
It wasn't the last time, but I know Mr. Griffin would love to speak to this, because that's been one of his things that he's been.
We have, yeah, alright, we have to do it, we'll, we'll, it's just something I thought about, just.
So we got 1,500?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, so we have a motion by Mr. Willoughby, Mr. Loscavich made the second, we have a roll call on just this first chunk here. The, the first chunk. First paragraph, sorry, I'm calling.
Yes.
Mr. Lombardo?
Yes.
Mr. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yep.
Mr. Thornton?
Yes.
Mr. Urban?
Yes.
Mr. Willoughby?
Yes.
Mr. Venus?
Yes.
Ms. Rado?
Yes. Okay, next little section, county manager?
Yes, next section, this is also for the reduction of main county manager, this is the related payroll expenses for social security and Medicare for 2907, between the two. Can I make that motion? Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Lombardo?
Yes.
Mr. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. McGinnley?
Yes.
Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Thornton?
Yes.
Mr. Urban?
Yes.
Mr. Lovovich?
Yes.
Mr. Venus?
Yes.
Mr. Scavitch?
Yes.
Mr. Rado?
Yes. Do you want to do district attorney, district justice courts and courts together? Or do you want to leave?
I would rather do them separate.
Okay, that's fine. That's fine.
I'm sure Mr. Sangodolce, if he's here, will have some comments. I'm making the motion to reduce the other contractual from eleven thousand to ten thousand five hundred and appeals from fifty-one hundred and twenty-five.
We have a motion by Mr. Lovovich, we have a second.
Second, for the discussion.
Okay. Second, Mr. Urban?
On the question?
Yep.
For the appeals, that's a significant cut, I'm sure Mr. Sangodolce might have something.
Absolutely.
I just want to know what, yeah, specifics of that.
I've thrown off of the numbers from New World, in twenty twenty-two, it looks like we've currently spent nineteen thirty-three, twenty-one, we spent five twenty-five, twenty-twenty, we spent four fifty-five, twenty nineteen, we spent six thirty-nine.
Mr. Lovovich, on the appeals, fifty-one hundred was in the proposed budget?
Yes.
And you're saying a minimum of twenty-five?
It was also fifty-one hundred and twenty-two.
Yeah, and you're saying twenty-five hundred as a minimum?
Yes, I think two twenty-five hundred.
So wouldn't they give us this twenty-six hundred dollar savings?
Yes. Oh, yes, thank you.
Well, I'm just looking, I can get a lot of numbers.
Yeah.
Go ahead.
Respect to the actual numbers, I know the numbers in New World are not recently updated, the current balance in our account with bills outstanding is nine hundred and fifteen dollars, so we spent almost all of that. Every year we spend approximately five thousand dollars, the actual expenditure, sometimes it runs over into the next year and is calculated differently. But we get approximately the same number of appeals every year. I know this seems like a low number compared to the number of appeals we actually do, but keep in mind that our filings, these come from our own appeals, which are filed prior to trial, as explained in my memorandum. Those are cases that we file prior to trial, usually about suppressed evidence that we're trying to get the appellate court to overturn, and it's often the difference between being able to bring charges or having court dismissed charges. We've been pretty successful at filing those, so I would ask that that number not be reduced. The actual number I have as of today, with, again, with bills outstanding until the end of the year is nine hundred and fifteen dollars remaining.
Nine fifty remaining, okay.
So that means instead of fifty-one hundred, fifty-one hundred was the amount for twenty twenty-two?
Twenty twenty-three, I think.
You used about forty-two hundred so far this year?
Correct.
Okay.
So what was the difference between nineteen and twenty-one, where it was under five hundred, I'm just curious. The year's nineteen? Your nineteen was six hundred and forty dollars, twenty was four hundred and fifty-four, and twenty was five hundred and twenty-five dollars.
I couldn't begin to tell you.
My observation, that's why I would make that amendment. I'm okay with withdrawing.
Thank you, Attorney Sangodolce.
Thank you.
Do you want to withdraw your motion?
I would withdraw that.
Both, they were together.
I will draw both.
You withdraw your second, Mr. Urban?
Both great.
Yeah, both.
Yeah, because the motion was made together.
That's limited, very.
All right, scratch that, next, courts.
Okay, district justice courts, rent of buildings, proposed five hundred twelve thousand, amendments for five hundred thousand, with savings of twelve thousand dollars. And I'm also going, I had a conversation with Mr. Heimars, the two governmental units, I believe, is also reimbursed, so I'm just going to withdraw that until it's only on the rented.
Thank you, do we have a second?
Second.
Just another question, I'm just, probably a simple answer, easy answer, probably a little bit, if the rent is already known by twelve, how do we get it down to five hundred, if it's already?
We've never hit five hundred. Oh. In the past, I have the numbers, they're on their attached sheet.
Yeah, the previous budget says.
All right, okay.
Yeah, I'll pull the numbers for you.
All right.
The rented buildings for this year so far is four hundred and eighty-three thousand, it's four hundred and eighty-three thousand year before, and it trails off.
Okay, all right, good.
Okay, so just, just that one rented building?
Just for the rented building.
Okay. We have a motion?
I second.
We have a second, we have a roll call?
Mr. McDermott? Yes. Mr. McGinley?
Yes.
Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Thornton?
Yes.
Mr. Urban?
Yes.
Mr. Lovovich?
Yes.
Mr. Venus?
Yes.
Mr. Scavitch?
Yes.
Mr. Lombardo?
Yes.
Mr. Rado?
Abstention, abstaining from all the courts budgets due to personal relationship? Okay, so, motion passes, moving on, Mr. Lovovich, Department four one eight four?
Yes, also the courts, books, we're proposing one hundred and fourteen thousand, amendment for one hundred thousand, saving fourteen thousand dollars. And Mr. Heimars is on the call, we'll talk about the juror cost, if you could explain that a little further, I propose one hundred and seventy-five, that, or proposed question was one hundred and seventy-five, made amendment for one hundred and forty-five, but you could explain that a little bit more? He's on the call. He said he's going to, if not, I mean.
Hi. Mr. Heimars, are you on? I don't think so.
Okay, well, he did explain it to me that the way that they're selecting jurors now has changed a little bit, trying to make it a little more convenient for people coming in for jury duty, so that way they're not waiting around all day, wasting their own personal time. So we did reach an agreement that I would drop that amendment to one hundred and sixty thousand for savings of fifteen thousand. So proposes one seventy-five, my amendment will be for one hundred and sixty thousand.
Okay, so you're going to make the motion on the books and the juror cost, but the juror cost amendment? One sixty, okay, so that's the motion.
Was it one sixty or one fifty, I'm sorry?
One sixty.
One sixty, thank you.
For fifteen thousand.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second for Mr. Venus, roll call.
Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Thornton?
Yeah.
Mr. Urban?
Yes.
Mr. Lovovich?
Yes.
Mr. Venus?
Yes.
Mr. Scavitch?
Yes.
Mr. Lombardo?
Yes.
Mr. McDermott? Yes.
Yes.
Abstention, same reason, motion passes. Division thirteen?
Hey, also Division thirteen, domestic relations, Department forty-one eighty-seven, reduction in postage from sixty-five thousand to fifty thousand for savings of fifteen thousand dollars. Reduction telephone and internet proposals, eleven thousand, amendment for ten thousand for savings of one thousand, for total savings of sixteen thousand, I make that motion.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Thornton?
Yes.
Mr. Urban?
Yes.
Mr. Lovovich?
Yes.
Mr. Venus?
Yes.
Mr. Scavitch?
Yes.
Mr. Lombardo?
Yes.
Mr. McDermott? Yes. Mr. McGinley?
Yes.
Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
Abstention, same reason, but motion passes. Four two three seven?
Yeah, making a motion to propose for other treatment support was two hundred thousand, making amendment for one hundred and seventy-five thousand, for savings of twenty-five thousand dollars.
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Urban?
Yes.
Mr. Lovovich?
Yes.
Mr. Venus?
Yes.
Mr. Scavitch?
Yes.
Mr. Lombardo?
Yes.
Mr. McDermott? Yes. Mr. McGinley?
Yes.
Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
We're good? Abstain. Motion passes, okay. Division sixteen, four one five one?
Solicitor, I make a motion to change office supplies from thirty-five hundred to thirty thousand for a five hundred dollar savings, telephone and internet from fourteen eighty to six eighty for savings of eight hundred dollars for a total of thirteen hundred.
To three thousand, great, or I thought you said thirty-five hundred.
Thirty-five hundred to three thousand. For five hundred.
Okay, we have a motion?
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Thornton?
Yes.
Mr. Urban?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Venus?
Yes.
Mr. Scavitch?
Yes.
Mr. Lombardo?
Yes.
Mr. McDermott? Yes. Mr. McGinley?
Yes.
Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Rado?
Yes. Motion, motion passes, division twenty four one one four, budget finance.
Okay, budget finance, I know you're here, if you have any questions on this, I'm making a motion to change other contractual from six hundred and thirty-one thousand five hundred dollars to six hundred thousand dollars for savings of thirty-one thousand five hundred dollars. And also for repairs and maintenance, propose one thousand, change it to seven fifty for two hundred and fifty dollar savings, total of thirty-one thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars.
Second, by Thornton. And again, that was based on past numbers.
Yes, we are, we pulled them up. Budget finance, other contractual to date, I believe, was four hundred and thirty-two thousand, last year's budget, it was five hundred and fifty-four thousand. And it was four sixty-one year before, five ninety year before, five seventy-four year before that. What did you say was the date, Greg? Today? Four thirty-two, it's my.
Next one, through the end of September?
That's up till today, to December.
Oh, it's up through today, I'm sorry.
And I see, what was it, I'm sure it was?
Four sixty-one, four eighty. Is there any, anything on that?
I think, I second.
I am good, yeah.
I think we'll be close to six hundred, obviously we're going to have some increases in contract, but I understand council is a tough spot, I've got no issue with the second one. I'd like to meet and change it, but if you leave it as it is on there, but I understand you probably haven't used it, but all these contracts are.
Okay, we have a motion, a second, do we have a roll call?
Mr. Urban?
Yes.
Mr. Lovovich?
Yes.
Mr. Venus?
Yes.
Mr. Scavitch?
Yes.
Mr. Lombardo?
Yes.
Mr. McDermott? Yes. Mr. McGinley?
Yes, as long as you have the money and never pay for the office, that's for my ticket.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Thornton?
Sorry, Brian.
Yes.
Yes.
It's okay, we can help on accurate.
All right, next one, four one three seven?
Assessors office, other contractual proposal eighty-six thousand, amendment for seventy thousand for savings of sixteen thousand.
That's what I think came up last weekend, it's a source, it's impact, so it's, it's, that's what the cost is.
So then I'll just withdraw that.
So the eighty-six thousand is the cost?
Yeah.
Okay.
We have a contract.
I'll withdraw that, I trust.
All right, that one's withdrawn. Moving on, four one three seven, tax collection.
Tax collection, other contractual proposals, one hundred and thirty-two thousand, I have an amendment for one hundred and twenty-two thousand for savings of ten thousand dollars. And two governmental units proposes twenty-six thousand, amendment for twenty-four thousand for savings of two thousand dollars for twelve thousand dollars total savings.
I'm fine with the second one, the first one I believe is reimbursed, I'm going to check it.
Okay, yeah.
Okay, if that's reimbursable.
Yeah, I'm pretty sure other, the other contractual for tax collections reimbursed. Yeah, so if you look at your budget post, other income under budget and finance tax collection is one thirty-two, five hundred, and then the expense is one thirty-two, so those are the ones that are, should match up.
Okay, so then I'll withdraw that first section, then just change the two governmental units.
Yep.
Do you still second it, Mr. Thornton?
With the changes, I'll check.
Okay, good. Roll call on that with the change, so it's just on five ninety thirty.
Mr. Lovovich?
Yes.
Mr. Venus?
Yes.
Mr. Scavitch?
Yes.
Mr. Lombardo?
Yes.
Mr. McDermott? Yes. Mr. McGinley?
Yes.
Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Thor?
Yes.
Mr. Urban?
Yes.
Hey, information technology, I am requesting that we change other communication expense from fifty-eight hundred to four thousand for savings of eighteen hundred dollars, repairs, maintenance miscellaneous from one hundred and seventy thousand to one hundred and forty thousand for savings of thirty thousand, total savings of thirty-one thousand eight hundred. I talked to Jen before, she said that she was okay with these changes, so I moved to make that.
Motion, second, roll call.
Mr. Venus?
Yes.
Mr. Scavitch?
Yes.
Mr. Lombardo?
Yes.
Mr. McDermott? Yes. Mr. McGinley?
Yes.
Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Thornton?
Yes.
Mr. Urban?
Yes.
Mr. Lovovich?
Yes.
Yes. Four two three three?
Okay, so for this one, I'm sure Mr. Rock, if he has any questions. I wanted to reduce electronic monitoring from five thousand to two thousand for savings of three thousand dollars in the outside inmate housing, which we also have not used since twenty nineteen, to reduce it from one hundred thousand to forty thousand for savings of sixty thousand, for total savings of sixty-three thousand dollars.
I'm in second.
So we have a motion and a second?
On the question? We have no objection to the electronic monitoring, what you make of housing portion, to make this portion side of that.
Okay.
I would be a little concerned if we have a lot of exposure to the facility.
Not for the outside inmate, would you be okay to reduce that anymore, if you leave it at six or at forty-five?
Take another ten, we'll roll the dice.
So though, like seriously, is that?
I'm serious, I think we can handle that.
Just as a generous mover.
Anything else back there?
I'll make that to thirty thousand.
Let's hope he's a generous next year.
No, make it to fifty, right?
Hundred to thirty thousand.
Hundred, hundred thousand to thirty thousand.
No, no, it's fifty thousand, right, is that, is that what you said?
To add, so you want fifty thousand?
He said take another ten.
Take another ten for the house. Oh, take ten. So we can drop to thirty?
No, we could drop to fifty.
So we're dropping down to sixty, no, dropping it to forty.
Oh, wait, okay.
It already is dropped.
My mistake, I misunderstood.
We read it backwards.
Okay, so we'll leave it the way it is.
Okay.
Leave it, okay, we have a motion, we have a second.
On the question, could you withdraw the third portion of that? Which there.
We didn't get there, we didn't get there.
Okay, thank you. Jumping in. Yeah, that works.
Leaving it as it is.
Which is good.
Motion has it.
Roll call on just how it's written.
Mr. Scavitch?
Yes.
Mr. Lombardo?
Yes.
Mr. McDermott? Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Thornton?
Yeah.
Mr. Urban?
Yes.
Yes.
Venus?
Yes.
Yes. Repairs and maintenance, are you leaving it, or keeping, or withdrawing it after what he said?
Okay, did you, you said that was?
That's a concern, we have a lot of exposure, there's some projects that we're doing, plus we're dealing with a lot of internal problems with the facility itself, and I think we have an exposure there with that, at this time.
I'll withdraw that.
Thank you. That's withdrawn, okay, boiler plant.
Okay, boiler plant, I'm proposing reduce sewer from five thousand to one thousand for savings of four thousand dollars, meetings, conference and training from five hundred dollars to two hundred and fifty dollars for savings of two hundred and fifty dollars, I make that motion.
Second.
Roll call.
The question? The sewer is, to date, we're at about thirty, thirty, two thousand, sixty-five dollars, ninety-seven cents. They look at last year, are, were expected to be up just under thirty-seven hundred, so I think probably, and it's pretty consistent, past three years.
No, okay, the numbers I have from New World, it says to date is four hundred and sixty-seven dollars, last year was six hundred and ten dollars.
That's one of three accounts that go into that.
So they all belong into one?
There's three, three bills that go into that, right?
Three bills are all part of the boiler plant? Bills are all part of the boiler plant?
Where they count for.
The three bills are, all three are.
Five fifty, forty?
All right, go ahead.
Okay.
That's okay?
Yeah.
Are we have a motion?
So it's, it's okay the way it is?
Yeah, let's.
Mr. Kurt?
Well, I have a question, though, you mentioned a couple of figures of thirty-six or thirty-seven hundred. Do you still maintain that's what you're paying for sewer in that, or no? Larry's telling me, he thinks you're looking at a different line item number. Oh, okay.
When we're looking under Rover Bridge, I believe.
Oh, okay.
This is for the. Okay.
Got it, yeah, this is just the boiler, okay, so we have a motion and a second. Roll call.
Mr. Lombardo?
Yes.
Mr. McDermott? Yes. Mr. McGinley?
Yes.
Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Thornton?
Yes.
Mr. Urban?
Yes.
Mr. Lovovich?
Yes.
Mr. Venus?
Yes.
Mr. Scavitch?
Yes.
Mr. Rado?
Yes.
Okay, next, we have Missouri County nine one one, I talked to Mr. Rosenkrantz about this, I think he was okay with it. I'm proposing reduce travel expense from one thousand dollars to two hundred and fifty dollars for savings of seven hundred and fifty, we spent very little on that, if you look at the numbers.
Second, Thornton.
Roll call on that.
Mr. McDermott? Yes. Mr. McGinley?
Yes.
Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Thornton? Mr. Barton?
Yes.
Mr. Urban?
Yes.
Mr. Lovett?
Yes.
Mr. Venus?
Yes.
Mr. Los Gavin?
Yes.
Mr. LaMardo?
Yes.
Mr. Rado?
Yes. Emergency management?
Okay, the next motion is for emergency management. Uh, vehicle fuel diesel proposed was two thousand dollars. Make an amendment for a thousand dollars for savings of a thousand dollars. Telephone and internet is proposed twenty-two thousand. There's an amendment for twenty thousand for savings of two thousand, for a total savings of three thousand dollars.
Do we have a second?
Second.
On the question?
Yes.
Did you, uh, did you speak to Lucy about this?
I did not.
Okay. I just, I just worry not so much about the telephone and internet, but what the diesel fuel.
Yeah, for the diesel, for the past, let's see, in the past, so year they were five hundred and ten dollars, last year is two hundred and eighty-three and nothing important.
Yeah, I, I understand that. Just, you know, something does happen, a flood, a disaster of any kind, that, that will obviously put that price up immediately.
Price of these oils, what?
And it's also high, yeah. So, that's what...
I can withdraw.
I'll, I'll vote no on that, but if you want to keep that.
I can withdraw the diesel, that's fine, it's only two thousand dollars. But I will definitely...
Carl, is that okay? Do you still second it with that, John? Okay. We have a roll call, just the telephone internet?
With telephone internet before we get that, you know, that's a, that operation is highly sophisticated as far as technology. I don't know.
You know, we see.
If you've been in that building, but there's computers and servers and it's also our backup, the nine-one-one. That nine-one-one would go down.
Uh, for telephone and internet, uh, this year to date, we spent sixteen thousand, sixteen thousand year before nineteen seventy, year before sixteen seventy.
Is she concrete? What do you think?
Uh, just so everybody's aware that we could end up with a, a technicality there with, uh, you know, not being able to drive.
They could always come to us and say...
Well, the only problem is they get emergencies.
Yeah.
I mean, I, I, whatever you want to do, I'm fine. Just so it's on the record that, you know, they're doing emergency work, so they, they can't come in on Tuesday night.
For us to have like an emergency. If you're in an emergency situation, though, you're in a, under a state of emergency, at that point, he has the power to go and spend what he needs, I think, right? And the other thing is if they're a backup for nine-one-one, is any of that reimbursable through the nine-one-one system?
Should we?
So, I mean, maybe we should find that out, too.
It's all reimbursed.
No, if it's all reimbursed, then I'm more than happy to withdraw. That's the case.
Well, I think the nine-one-one backup.
Nine-one-one backup.
Okay.
I think it was...
Nine-one-one backup is fully covered by my nine-one-one funding. None of that comes out of that fund.
Okay.
All right, so motion for just the telephone internet. And we have a second. Do you have a roll call?
Mr. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. McGinnley?
Yes, with the caveat that I made sure we have the right technology.
Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Barton?
Yes.
Mr. Urban?
Yes.
Mr. Lovett?
Yes.
Mr. Venus?
Yes.
Mr. Los Gavin?
Yes.
Mr. LaMardo?
Uh, I'm gonna vote no.
Mr. Rado?
Yes. Pro bono.
Okay, the next motion I have is repairs and maintenance and software for the pro bono jury. I mean, I may have missed something. I don't know if anybody's here to speak to that. I was proposing, uh, the change from twenty thousand to five thousand for savings of fifteen thousand. I don't think we've spent anything on that in the past.
Okay, so we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, is anyone here to speak to that? That's a large chunk.
I'm on. Ms. Rado, it's Joan Hogarth.
Can you speak to that briefly, please?
Sure. That's a new line item this year to cover the cost of our software system. Prior years, we used to pay for it all out of the five-oh-two pro bono jury automation account. That account's been depleted due to paying operational expenses, um, at the records facility, and we no longer have the balance to cover it. So we're paying fifteen thousand, seven-twelve out of automation this year, and the other twenty thousand, we put in a general fund. So it is the actual amount needed for our software contract.
Thank you.
And that, I'll just withdraw that.
You withdrawing something? Okay, withdrawn. Other financing sources for county reserve?
The last thing I had is from the county reserve fund, uh, proposed is one million fifty-one thousand five-oh-one.
Three hours ago.
Yeah. Did we vote on?
Yeah.
Yes.
I don't remember voting.
We're very...
Did you cut that at three hundred?
That's what the cut is, yes. Sound just, the amendment is three hundred.
Did we, did we vote on that?
We, I think we voted on that. It was lumped into the expenses.
Yeah.
Yeah. I actually would like to talk about that one. Well, I'd like, I'll make a motion to propose a change to reserve fund from three hundred thousand to seven hundred thousand. And I would second that. Or if you'd like to meet in the... Let's not...
Just so...
We should have some discussion.
Yeah.
All right, so we have a motion and a second for three hundred to seven hundred.
A little, on the question, just so everybody, our first budget in two thousand twelve, we had zero in the reserve fund. It wasn't good, but that's what it was. And next year, we had around two hundred thousand, and actually, over the years, you were able to double it up a little bit. You know, uh, what's the right number? That's for debate. Yeah, so, you know, down to seven hundred thousand, I have it down to three hundred thousand. Want to go back to five hundred thousand, but I would not go up to seven hundred thousand. I think that's a little bit too high.
Mr. Swets, for the credit rate, that is my biggest concern.
It's not gonna, one line won't affect the credit rating, but I think five hundred thousand's a good number. I think I mentioned in past meetings that I think five hundred thousand, because the intent is for an unforeseen item.
We keep telling people, make sure you come back.
Yeah, and you're gonna come back to three hundred thousand for an unforeseen item, maybe more, so.
So if he changes his...
To seven hundred thousand. Want to change it to five hundred thousand without the, I guess. I'm having your first...
I'll make that.
Or if I can change it to five hundred.
No, you could just change yours. You made the motion.
I'll change, I'll make the motion to change it to five hundred. If you'd like to second that. I'll second you.
Okay, so the motion then just is five hundred thousand.
Change your reserve back to five hundred.
Yep, okay.
Just so we're clear, you don't think that will hurt our credit rate?
Not one.
Okay, turn it off.
Okay.
The budget itself is more important.
Roll call.
Asking about it is more important than what I have.
Case of the murders.
Yes.
Mr. McGinnley?
I don't know if I can quote that. I already voted. Yes.
Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yeah.
Mr. Sarden?
Yeah.
Mr. Urban?
Yes.
Mr. Lovett?
Yes.
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 Mr. LaMardo?
Yes.
Mr. Rado?
Yes. Okay, that is, I believe that's the end of the council.
End of the amendment.
And so, Mr. Swets, did you have the next five dollar fee amendment?
I did. I submitted to council. I think I wrote it here somewhere. I assume it's two ten thousand. Uh, in our focus on the general fund, which obviously is a tax increase, uh, there was a pause on the original manager's budget for seven hundred thousand for the five dollar fee. Uh, so I propose moving the seven hundred thousand from the revenue expense. It's in a two-ten thousand. It does not impact the general fund, but the residents would be paying a five dollar fee plus any... So I propose it.
Do we have a motion?
So, I'll second. Or motion.
So we all just make the motion? Okay. Motion, second?
Sure.
Is that okay? All right, roll call on that.
McGinnley?
Well, I was an advocate of the street, and the reason I was an advocate of it, because it produced one point four million dollars that we could use on roads and bridges. Unfortunately, the first two years that we had to be in place, you know, also got a million dollars as a bonus from the state, so it was really two point four million. So I guess I have to vote no.
Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Thornton?
No.
Mr. Urban?
Yes.
Mr. Lovett?
Yes.
Mr. Venus?
Yes.
Mr. Los Gavin?
Yes.
Mr. LaMardo?
Yes.
Mr. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. Rado?
Yes. Okay, we now have public comment on non-agenda. Yes.
Move on. Um, the DA is here. I made some cuts to his last week, and I do think we talked to that. You don't give him a chance to talk to us about it, so if you have something to say, Sam, I'd love to hear it.
I do. I only have three items, but they're items of substantial importance, at least, uh, to my office. And that, I believe, a motion was made to amend our capital case fund, and you look at the grid that I've provided, uh, it's been budgeted at a hundred and fifty thousand, uh, nearly every year, you know, as far as I can remember, which is at least three years, I think. Uh, our current, uh, balance is ninety cents, and I think there's somewhat of a misunderstanding of what that fund is used for, because I know you guys are usually well aware where we have a capital case going on, but, capital cases are determined at their inception about whether they have something called an aggravating circumstance, which would qualify the case as capital. So we'll use, uh, that fund, pay expenses, uh, up until the time that we have to declare whether or not we're going to seek death penalty, at which point then we would revert to our exam, our regular witness and exam line item. There are lots of reasons not to seek the death penalty based on only one aggravator. A lot of times, as you've probably seen in the capital trials that are reported in the news, that the defendants would have, you know, some kind of terrible background, uh, too many mitigating circumstances, and it doesn't warrant seeking death. And only one aggravator often does not lead to success unless it's a very heinous crime and a very serious aggravator. So, um, based on that, it was asked to re-reduce that line item from a hundred and fifty thousand to a hundred thousand, which is a substantial reduction. Another thing that you actually all addressed yourselves when it comes to emergencies, a lot of times when we're in capital cases, decisions have to be made right away, um, leading up to trial. Uh, we're getting experts that cost sometimes ten, twelve, fifteen thousand dollars. Uh, we get extra bills at the last minute, new assessments. We don't have time to come to council and ask for extra money. Uh, so, I would ask that that be amended back to the hundred and fifty thousand. Uh, the second line item was the examine witness fee. You can see that the current balance is twenty-five thousand two hundred and seventy-one dollars. I would note, uh, we all, we still have a number of bills outstanding. Uh, this was a trial week. We're constantly doing more and more evaluations, uh, for juveniles, for mental health. That's a line item that I would suggest the thirty thousand dollar reduction is too substantial. Uh, when asked for more deductions, we actually proposed a ten thousand dollar reduction, which would put us right around the area that we think we need to be and have been for the last few years. So I'd ask, if council would entertain a motion to restore capital cases to a hundred and fifty thousand, and exam and witnesses, uh, to, looks like it would be a hundred and forty thousand.
I'll make that motion.
Okay, can we have a roll call? Okay, that's on capital funds, capital case fund back to one fifty, and exam and witness fee to one forty. So that's the motion. We have a second roll call.
Can we do the one at a time, just in case somebody wants to...
Sure.
Thank you.
So, I'll make the motion that, uh, we keep the capital case line item at a hundred and fifty thousand.
Okay. Mr. Mitchell? Roll call on just the capital case fund?
Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
I'm staying with my son-in-law, the first assistant.
Mr. Thornton?
Yes.
Mr. Urban?
Yes.
Mr. Lovett?
Yes.
Mr. Venus?
Yes.
Mr. Los Gavin?
Yes.
Mr. LaMardo?
Yes.
Mr. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. McGinnley?
Yes.
Mr. Rado?
Yes. Motion passes.
I'll make the motion for examine witness line item that would reduce it, uh, only by ten thousand, down to a hundred and forty thousand.
Yeah. Second, but Mr. Venus? He beat you.
Roll call. Mr. Perry?
I'm staying.
Mr. Thornton?
Yes.
Mr. Urban?
Yes.
Mr. Lovett?
Yes.
Mr. Venus?
Yes.
Mr. Los Gavin?
Yes.
Mr. LaMardo?
Yes.
Mr. McDermott? Yes. Mr. McGinnley?
Yes.
Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
Mr. Rado?
Yes. Thank you, attorney Sam.
Thank you. The third item I wanted to address, which I did bring before council, uh, earlier, as you know, in the managers, uh, the former managers' proposed budget, two full-time assistant district attorneys were cut, which was something that was never discussed with me. I think it actually happened inadvertently in my dis, my discussions after, and I have discussed that with a few members of council. I realized that we cut, uh, according to Mr. McGinnley's amendment, to which I agreed, uh, the funding for the four detectives, uh, realizing that it comes from other sources that are still pending. However, I would ask that, uh, the two eighty-eight positions be restored, and by our calculations, and I understand this is not an exact figure, but, uh, plain by calculations, that that would be a hundred and thirty-two thousand, realizing that HR and budget and finance then have to adjust, uh, for exact benefits and things like that. Uh, our office is short-staffed as it is. If you had a chance to read that section of my memo, I learned just this week that another, uh, one of our most experienced part-time ADAs, uh, who does a lot of our special victims unit cases, is now leaving for a job with domestic relations. Uh, one of our administrative assistants is leaving, uh, and one of our clerks is leaving. So, uh, these are three more losses that we've sustained in the last week. I feel that we're gonna have a, a great improvement in the ability to hire with the new contract in the new year, but I would ask those positions and that funding here is...
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Roll call.
On the question before.
Mr. Mitchell, one second.
Mr. Sam, I think you told me yesterday, I think it was yesterday, last week, you have every position filled with that one or something?
No, so on the represented line item, I will have, uh, with this new loss, one full-time and two part-time, uh, that would be vacant, and I have two unrepresented lawyers in management, uh, that are the, the most experienced supervisors. Those, those two positions are vacant, so I have a total of five. Uh, with these cuts, that would then go down to, I would actually have to let someone go, because I would have a, a represented ADA and no physician.
We have a motion and a second. Clear roll call?
Mr. Thornton?
Yes.
Mr. Urban?
Yes.
Mr. Lovett?
Yes.
Mr. Venus?
Yes.
Mr. Los Gavin?
Yes.
Mr. LaMardo?
Yes.
Mr. McDermott? Yes. Mr. McGinnley?
Yes.
Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
I'm staying.
Yes. Motion passes. Thank you. Come on. Do you have another one?
No, I was just going to, uh, actually comment on non-agenda item, if you're ready for that.
Oh, how, where they, where they're counsel, are you, can we start public comment, or you guys?
Do we have a, do we have any type of rough accounting as to where we are yet? No?
Yeah, I just need a few minutes.
Okay. All right, yeah, that's fine, that's fine. Okay, all right, that's okay. Apologies.
Yeah, no.
Sorry, no rush.
Okay.
I just didn't know how.
Go ahead.
Um, so I just wanted to say, based on the earlier comments from the public, as you know, our office was requested to undergo an investigation of the election, which we are doing. Uh, and I know a lot of people comment meeting after meeting that we don't have answers. That's just generally the nature of the way we do investigations. This, this happens to be more, more, be more public. Usually you learn about our investigations, uh, at the time we make an arrest. That's how people learn about it, otherwise we keep it quiet. Uh, this was a very public incident that everyone's aware of and called for an investigation, so you're aware that it's going on, but I don't have the luxury of giving meeting-to-meeting updates about, you know, what information we're learning pretty much until it's over. Uh, I can assure the public that we are taking it seriously, uh, that we're engaging in activity every day. We're in the process of speaking to literally hundreds of witnesses. Um, so I, I do want to assure the public that it's happening, uh, that very experienced detectives are working on it. In fact, every detective in my office has some role in that investigation, but unfortunately, it's not gonna go as quickly as people want. Um, it's more important, at least to us, uh, and probably to the public, too, uh, to get it right, uh, than to get it done quickly. And finally, I just wanted to thank council. I know that we've exchanged emails. I've seen all the work that you've done, and I know you're in a very difficult position. You're not responsible for the condition of the county, but I appreciate how seriously you take your role and how seriously you take the way that these small changes do affect every office, but most particularly mine. So it's greatly appreciated by my lawyers, my detectives, my staff, and especially myself, hopefully the members of the public that we protect. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yes, attorney Sam, you're dolled. Thank you for that comment, and, uh, back to the investigation. It's my understanding, of course, because it's your office investigating that, you're focused, uh, primarily on the, if there was a possible criminal element behind the events that day. You're not focused on the, uh, housekeeping items and things that...
So that's not...
The steps that...
Right, it's not entirely true. Uh, our primary focus, of course, is criminal audits generally are, are fairly weak in almost every area that we investigate. The election code does authorize to investigate pretty much any confusion, problem issue with elections. It's my preference, and has historically been the district attorney's policy, to not get involved in non-criminal issues, because it isn't our job to tell, uh, the election board, the election bureau, how to do their job more efficiently, or, you know, make those administrative changes. However, um, in the suggestions made here, it was something that I thought was most efficient for us to conduct the entire investigation, rather than have different people, different associations, trying to do little parts of the investigation, pulling people in over and over, not knowing the entire scope of what was going on. So, in this investigation, I'm not only looking at criminal, uh, activity, potential criminal activity, uh, we're looking at all aspects, and as I did in the first investigation, you'll recall, things that I thought were not appropriate for me to comment, I referred back to the administration to do with that information what they would.
Thank you for that.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
Okay. Go ahead. For public comment?
Hi, can I request that I have a little bit of leniency on time given the issue I have?
Speak up a little bit.
I said, could I have a little bit, could I request a little leniency on time? I try to do my best to time this as best as I can.
Sure, you can start, go ahead.
But I, I would prefer you gave me a little bit of leniency on time for the three minutes. Uh, Madam Chair and council members, my name is Alyssa Fusaro from Luzerne. I am a member of the Luzerne County Board of Elections and Registration. I recently became aware of some rumors going around about me. These rumors were that county council had planned to remove me from the Board of Elections and Registration. Initially, I thought that the removal had to do with my refusal to certify the two thousand twenty-two general election here in Luzerne County. Imagine my surprise. When I saw a Facebook post made from someone called Randall Rhodes on his page, that almost is solely focused on attacking me, stating that I made racial slurs against someone in the bureau office on November ninth, and that this is the reason for my possible removal. Finally, today, the report was released to me. I was unaware, it was sitting in my email, as I started receiving phone calls from the media, asking if I would like to make a statement, so I naively asked them for a copy. As for the report, I had no time ever used any racial slur or call to anyone a name other than they're giving me. I had no time use profanity, I'm sorry, while in the bureau office, and actually cringe when people say the F-word or GD around me. It goes through me like talking on a blackboard. I had no time asked anyone if they were legal to work here, and only asked them if they had been sworn in, and explained what that meant by raising my left hand in explaining, because my right, my phone was in my right hand, as I was speaking to them, because I was on the phone with Councilman Urban the entire time. I'm appalled that this disgusting narrative of hate has crept into our county, and that you, as our county leaders, have been enter, have even entertained such nonsense, as it has no place here. Did anyone do their homework on this narrative prior to deciding that your report was truth? Has anyone thought about how these manufactured lies and claims of racism would affect my son, who's black Hispanic? More specifically, Puerto Rican yo. The same boy that came home from school day after day crying because of racial slurs. Incidentally, the exact one used in that report. Has anyone thought about how this lie would affect, how it would affect those in my multicultural church family? I brought my pastor, my friend, my confidant, my mentor for the past fifteen years, Samuel Washington, who I finally call prophet, with me as my support tonight, and to speak to my character if he feels led to do so. I make it no secret that I am, through the Lord's forgiveness and grace, a Christian woman who has been brought up on Christian values. Just as Ephesians four thirty-two says, love, to love one another, I have made it a point to do just that. I am a kind and loving individual that respects and loves everyone, no matter who you are or the color of your skin. I hope that you will see through this disgusting attack on my character. I know that I only had three minutes for comment, and I have tried to include as much as I can in these three minutes. I'm here now. I'm willing to answer any and all of your questions, and I ask that you do a proper and valid investigation into this, fully. Having people come in, swear in, and give their correct and proper testimony before running my name through the mud, because it affects the people that I love. In my heart, it affects them, and it affects their, it, it affects them personally. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Fusaro. Yep.
Run that from Nanicoke, Pennsylvania. ARP allocations according to U.S. Treasury Department guidelines for distribution of said funds, covert repair, resizing and removal, replacement of storm sewer, and additional types of stormwater infrastructures or qualifiers of said funds. This is what the MS four unfunded federal mandate was implemented for. My question to council chair and council co-chair respectively is, would you be so kind as to restore the tax to the property owners during Governor Walz's order and him remanding them to their homes? The property owners did not want to be pulled off their jobs. This constricted the revenue being generated in those households normally without coronavirus. My suggestion is to tally up all the months the property owners were remanded to their homes, and that the amount of tax collected be pulled from the ARP funds and be paid back to the next, to the taxpayers. This would make them whole for a circumstance they did not create. This being asserted regarding the 32, 33 communities that are collectively a part of the Wyandotte Valley Sanitary Authority Stormwater Feed. Secondly, can county council members vote in favor of removing Ms. Fusario from the Board of Election without solid evidence? It is my opinion that there would have to be solid evidence which would include an email or video surveillance or a text message would qualify. If it is hearsay and is based on propagated word of mouth, it has no validity, no matter how many witnesses. The burden of proof lies on the Board of Elections' par and its accusers. The Bureau of Elections performed irresponsibly with the shortage of paper for ballots and coincidentally in Republican strongholds. Ms. Fusario has always expressed her Republican values. This places her in the bullseye for bait. A-bait and switch tactic are common in diverting the attention off what has transpired in situations. This is if no solid evidence is provided. Luzern County voters experienced failures from the Bureau of Elections and Bureau of Elections in not one or two, but three occasions in the past few years. Both apparatuses and those voting processes failed in their duties. They failed to perform their duties professionally. Military ballots found in dumpsters in the general election of 2020. Header of introduction screens on election voting machine says official Democratic ballot on Republican voter screens in the primary of 2021. Lastly, the shortage of paper on May 18th of 2022. The evidence is clear against the Bureau of Elections and the Board of Elections. Are the taxpayers of Luzern County who furnish the resources for these apparatuses in the voting process going to be intimidated and not demand the proof against Ms. Fusario? The most important question is, will council remove the proper individuals responsible for the last latest debacle?
Mr. Knapp, please. Robin Cochran?
The preamble displayed in this room indicates a common desire for truth, accountability, and openness and that you undertake a contract of public trust and integrity. The actions of council are not honoring that contract. It's time that you do. Your primary responsibility is to Luzern County taxpayers, not partisan political appointees. This means fiscal responsibility and ensuring free and fair elections. Council under the charter has authority to require reports from any county board and to require their attendance at any council meeting, yet the public still awaits timely answers to these questions. How much extra is it costing an already overloaded DA to investigate the mishandled November 8th election and ballot harvesting from prior years? Why hasn't either the former or interim county manager terminated the director and assistant director of elections when the bungled election itself is proof of incompetence? When will council respect the rights of all voters and terminate Denise Williams from the election board? As chair, Williams also created the election disaster blatantly disregarding her responsibilities for election integrity and instead creating voter disenfranchisement. And more recently, since the director of elections position was posted a week ago on the county website, does this mean Beth Gilbert McBride has been fired? Why isn't the assistant director of elections position posted since Emily Cook is also incompetent in her role? I appreciate the DA's update tonight, but I ask council, stop wasting precious taxpayer dollars on incompetent personnel and lengthy investigations. The county's own website indicates who is responsible for the election mess. It states, "Under the supervision of the Luzern County Board of Elections, the Bureau of Elections and Voter Registration Office orchestrates and controls all facets relating to voter registration and elections," period. To push answers off to the DA or to the Election Integrity Committee that the election board ignores is more stalling and passing the buck. It's time to courageously fulfill your duties as council, stop protecting political appointees, and become transparent to the public. Once you resolve the budget on Thursday, we expect these answers to be your number one priority. To consider any tax increase, much less payer merit increases in these strapped financial times is irresponsible and unjust. I've worked in the private and nonprofit sectors and have been told in hard financial times, we simply can't afford raises this year.
Thank you.
You have to do the same duty.
Mr. Griffith, thank you, Ms. Cochran. Mr. Griffith?
Now, the, the Home Rule Charter Study Commission was not put on the agenda again for the question. Counsel needs to really act swiftly on that. I know your plates are full, so consider that at next meeting. Well, I know you have another meeting on Thursday, and I know time is fleeting by, but something to consider. If we're going to get a study commission on, on the ballot by the people so they can take a look at this charter and fix the fatal flaws that are in it, it would be very helpful for government as we move forward. I want to talk about the lease for the McCarthy building coming up on the work session to discuss. Uh, I, I think it's very important. I know when Mr. Robertson was here, he talked about eliminating that lease and saving the county that money. And that was brought by the department head, I think, or from the, one of the agencies over there. So just consider those options. That's $400,000 that we could save if we could bring those folks across the street to either children and youth or make some of them remote and save that revenue. I know it's an agency and state funded and, and all those monies come from the state, but it's still taxpayers' money. We still fund 20% if there's any children and youth people there. So I just think it's important that we take a look at that at work. We're nickel and diamond budget items, and I applaud the members of council for their work on that. That's a very tedious task to go down line by line and even extrapolate the numbers for payroll taxes. That's important, and every nickel counts. So consider that when we consider the building lease for that. That's a huge amount of money, $400,000 a year is a lot of money that this council could possibly save a couple of bucks along the way. If we don't use it to its capacity, we're better off not to have it. But I don't know what the study was by the previous manager or the department head, but just make sure that you do your due diligence on that, make sure that that's a worthwhile effort. If we're going to have that lease, make sure it's something that we need. Lastly, I, I just feel bad for Alyssa because she's a good friend and to do that to a person is damaging and unfortunate. And I've been there, done that. It's unfortunate. We need to be more careful. We really do. We need to be more careful with what we say, myself included, and what we do in public service. It's damaging the people's character. It's damaging people's reputations. And I've been there. And I just think we should do better. Thank you.
Please.
Yeah.
On the lease suggestion, thank you, Mr. Griffith. And, uh, generally, I, I do agree with the substance of your suggestion with that lease. My, my only concern with eliminating something like that is it is concerning children and youth. And, and based on the enormous issues and problems we had, which went all the way up to the state level, you know, we're under great scrutiny with children and youth services. And, uh, I, I hesitate or balk at cutting something like that, especially when I, I did hear some discussions around the county that maybe some of these children and youth workers could work from home remotely. And, and just me personally, I'm against that. I don't believe, especially in that department, working from home is, is the best option. With other walks of life, yes, I do, but not with that. But I do respect your comments as controller, and I'll, I'll take them into consideration.
We do have for discussion on the work session as well. Also, really quick, I normally don't comment on public comments, but, uh, Controller Griffith, I did try to propose a government study commission at the beginning of this year, um, and it lacked support in the work session and didn't even make it to that voting session. Okay, uh, Mr. Dombrowski?
I think Alyssa's a good person and, uh, thanks for your input there. Uh, Mr. Thornton, I, I liked your analysis last week about, uh, between the pandemic and inflation, that the budget this year is not the best time to raise taxes and next year might be better. I agree with that 100%. I also like Mr. LaBarro's statement in the newspaper that it's his understanding around three and a half million dollars of ARP funds could be used if you use them as lost revenue. Uh, we've only raised taxes one time between 2018 and 2022. That was 3.25%. 2019 was fiscal year 2020. So I think the residents would probably accept that same amount, 3.25%, that's my opinion. And, uh, but they would not accept more. What the recourse would be, who knows? But I'm just saying at the polls or whatever, but I don't think they would be accepting anything more because they only had it one time in five years with that percentage. The five union contracts have already been signed by Mr. Swet. And that's probably a large part. I don't have the exact numbers in front of me. The personnel costs are more than $94 million. And I bet those five union contracts, knowing how unions are, is a huge percentage of that $94 million. So it's already been signed, and there's not much you could do about it. So I think we pretty much have to do what Mr. Swet said and find a way to, to pay the bill now. So there is light at the end of the tunnel, and that is that, uh, 2009, the county owed $466 million in debt. And since the Home Rule was established in 2012, they've made a tremendous progress on that. Now, at the end of this year, according to Times Leader article, the wall of $218 million, counting principal and interest, it's less than one half, way less than one half principal now than it was in 2009. That's not that long ago. So at the debt service currently of 26.4 to 26.7 million dollars, our final payment is going to be in the year 2030 of $6.2 million. If we do the math there, we've got in excess of surplus of $20 million in the year 2030, which again is only seven years away. So I mean, there is light at the end of the tunnel. I think the council's job really at this point is just to do the best you can, plug the leaks in the levee until, uh, until we get to the year 2030, you know, because everything's looking smooth then. I don't see how, you know, the, uh, the wheels can come off between now and then. Myself personally would afford to agree in accounting, but anything's possible, but I, I think things are looking good from my perspective. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Walter.
Jamie Walsh from Ross Township. I just wanted to bring a couple of things to your attention since, uh, number one, under the, when the election board certified the election, it was done under, while it was under investigation, and I'm glad the DA tonight said it's still under investigation. I don't know how you can certify an election when it's under investigation to begin with. In 2013, Hazelton School Board Election, the, the Hazelton School Board Election was botched by the election manager due to forgetting to place candidates' names on ballots for carbon in school counties. The people petitioned Luzern County Court, and a new election was rolled on by a judge. And I, I really hope that you can do that because we have zero confidence in our election after the last three. And something has to be fixed because we, we don't have elections anymore. We have selections, and it's not fair to the people. We had two people file an appeal within the 48 hours. They both called the pro bonitaries office yesterday, and they were told they never received their filing of appeal. One person, their name was signed in the book when they showed up to vote and had to sign, file a provisional ballot. Another person that filed a provisional ballot has her tracking number and still does not show that her vote has been counted online. So, um, what I'm, uh, here to do, and I, I tried to send these to you through email. There's a couple hundred. Did you receive any notices from people through email?
Yes.
At all in the last week?
Yes, we.
In the last.
Are they the petitions?
They're, they're notices of maladministration.
When the last, in the last couple of weeks, we received something to that effect.
Hundreds.
But there were a lot.
These are new, and someone in your IT department shut off receiving these, so we can't communicate with our elected officials, so I have to come and serve you in public with these. There's three notices here for each of you. There's a copy. Oh, there's a copy too for the solicitor.
I think what happens is after we get several hundred of the same email, it marks as spam.
Okay, well, it was shut off somehow, and you, and I want to make sure you receive them. You have five days to respond to that notice. And, uh, I have a couple hundred more that I can send to you in a, in a zip file, uh, but I'm going to send a read, a read receipt on the email so I know that you all read them and have them. Because we cannot move forward with a special election here coming up very soon if we don't have a valid and legit election system, okay? We want this one redone and prove to us you can run a clear, clean election. Thank you.
Any other members of the public that are here? Mr. Dwyer?
Brian Dwyer from Larchville. Again, I want to thank the district attorney, he's not here, for giving us a briefing. And that, that's all we're asking for is an update. I understand during an active investigation that there are pieces of information from that investigation that cannot be divulged to the public at that time because they're part of the investigation. But all we're asking for is, is a progress report every now and then, just so we have some faith that the matter is being taken seriously and, and is being undertaken legitimately. I would like to echo Walter's comments. We can do better. Counsel, uh, everyone in the audience, department heads, the sheriff's department, that should be the goal of this county, should be the motto of this county. We can do better. It's not a criticism. It's, it's just, it's just the way it is. We can do better. Just so I understand it, on the record, council has made amendments to the Bureau of Elections budget proposal. Council has removed the $8,000 pay raise for the department heads and the 2% merit raise across the entire Bureau of Elections as a whole. Is that correct? Okay, I would like to commend you all for that action sincerely. My last point, uh, council in the, in the budget items has voted no on the $5 vehicle registration surcharge. Again, I sincerely commend you on that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dwyer.
Mr. Dwyer, to clarify one thing, I know a couple of people made a comment about the, the amendment that I made, the $8,000 amendment. That amendment wasn't technically for the people that are in that position right now. That amendment was for the position itself. So obviously, under the circumstances, you know, we as council, but I feel it was, it was appropriate to give it. But the amendment wasn't necessarily for a person. It was for a position.
No.
Just, just as a clarification.
It wasn't directed at any.
Yeah, I understand. Okay, now we're good.
Samuel Washington?
Thank you for giving me a couple of minutes to say something about Alyssa. The allegations that are being made about her or against her is ridiculous. I've pastored her for 15 years plus. In the midst of that, we have a multicultural church. We have a boxing gym. Alyssa's very, very hands-on. Don't take her emotions as false or, or anything that would sway the, the council. The reality is her convictions are very, very strong. It is just not in her character. It is just not in her mannerism to do those things which were said. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Griffith. I want that we should speak. Sure.
A name come up tonight.
Oh, really quick.
Oh, my name is Nina Ropess, Kingston Township. A name come up tonight that jogged my memory about something. About three years, well, I'm not my age. I don't remember time wise too good, but it was right around the time that Derek Siobhan was, went to court. Now, I on Facebook just made a comment. I don't even remember what the comment was, but I made a comment about what happened with him. And about five days later, I hear from a friend of mine that I am on a hate list in Luzern County. Now, my friend was on their hate list with me. She was extremely upset. And well, I was too at first. What, what is this about? And that's when I found out about Randall Rhodes. Now, if ever there was a hateful person, leftist to the core, and he hates everyone to the right. Now, I see him on Facebook. You can go look all you want, but that's who's behind all this hate in Luzern County. I didn't deserve to be on a hate list. I, I just said, have your fun. But my friend was a mess because she was on a hate list. Now, that person is. because she was on a hate list. Now, that person is doing this to people like Alyssa, who I love. Now, the very first meeting that I ever came to, I was asking questions. Why did y'all wa- walk out this room? She says, I'm not at liberty to say. She has never divulged anything ever that she should have ever never divulged. She is a beautiful, good person. And believe me, I didn't deserve to be on a hate list and neither does she. Thank you.
I want that we should speak. Okay, we're gonna move on to the Zoom. The first one is a very concerned resident. That's their name on the Zoom, but you have to just state your name and the municipality you reside in, please.
My name is Joe McCabe. I live in Laughlin, Pennsylvania. I like to, can you hear me?
We can hear you.
I'd like to see an investigation on who's leaking information to the press and the the liberal outlets into the case of Alyssa Fasaro. Uh, last week, there was a gentleman that uh, spoke and his name was Mark Schaefer. He had confidential information that was not released to the public. The Times Leaders, this is his voice, released Alyssa Fasaro's name. Just uh, this evening at six o'clock, WNEP reported on Alyssa Fasaro mentioning her by name. As of last week, the county meeting, that was confidential information. So somebody within the county inner circles is leaking information to the liberal circles and the liberal media. And there really needs to be a investigation on who's uh, leaking information because the county's liable if they're uh, wrong about Ashley Fasaro. That that could be a lawsuit. And uh, it could affect the insurance rates of Luzerne County and that's the taxpayers' money. So I'd like to see an investigation on who uh, in the liberal uh, circles is leaking information to their friends and the the liberal media. That's all I gotta say.
Elizabeth Hartman. Elizabeth Hartman. She's muted. Oh, there we go. Beth Hartman, can you hear us? We'll move on to Claudia Glennon. Beth, if you can hear us, we'll come back to you. Claudia's hand went down. Vivian?
Hi, this is Vivian Kreidler-Lacina from Neskapek. Um, I know Alyssa. I've had very many conversations with her. I've asked her questions and all that. She has never divulged any information to me. She has always been very nice. And a matter of fact, I will be honest, one time I dropped the the F-bomb and I thought she was going to have heart failure. I apologized officially up and down. She accepted my apology. But what the media did, she was tried and convicted in the media. I had no idea what was going on. I had no idea till last week when Mr. Griffith said that the paper had contacted him. I immediately started looking at the newspaper articles and I was appalled that somebody, whether it be a council member or it be from the Board of Elections or on the Board of the Election Board or the Election Bureau who leaked this information. This is wrong. You don't do that. We live in a day and age right now that looking at somebody wrong gets you punched in the face or hit over the head with with a bottle or shot at or stabbed. This this can't go on. We need to find out whoever leaked this and charges need to be brought against them. I know they would only be harassment charges. But this woman right now, Alyssa Alyssa's, with everything going on, she's now a target for for people who have, I'm gonna say this, lost their mind because they've been locked up for two years in a society where you can't do anything. So please, do a full investigation. The the law office that is saying you need to get rid of her is wrong. This should be something that council is looking at and bringing these people in, swearing them in under oath and make them stand in front of the entire Luzerne County and swear under oath that this was all said, because I'm guaranteeing you, once you do that, they're not gonna testify. They're gonna come out with the truth on who put them up to doing this. We are the laughing, you know, I I hear everybody saying all this, we are the laughing stock of the country. I have a petition that I have signatures from from Texas, Florida, California, North Carolina. That's, I mean, it's all over the place of what is going on in Luzerne County. You had the the election debacle. Now you got this. And people are like, what is going on in that town? You know, and it's it's wrong. We shouldn't have that. We need to straighten this out and it needs a a formal apology needs to be given to Alyssa by the entire county, especially the board, especially the the um, acting um, manager and apologize for this being leaked out.
Thank you. Thank you. Elizabeth Hartman? Claudia Glennon?
Okay, sorry. Claudia Glennon Salem Township. I didn't receive a way to unmute before. Can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Okay. Um, the Office of Law referred to counsel, the incident involving the actions of the election board member on November ninth. I would just like to know how counsel is proceeding with their investigation. Many area residents are trying to make this a personal and a partisan issue. I don't believe it is. Workplace harassment and ethical behavior have no partisan divides. The rumor and innuendo of so many things involving this last election is dividing the county even further and it's extremely dangerous. And I'm just amazed by the hypocrisy of the right. I don't want to put any aspersions on Alyssa. Uh, I I know nothing about the details involving this. I just think I think it needs to be investigated. But nobody has said word one about people yelling witch and all kinds of other horrendous things to Denise Williams and uh, Audrey Cerniac. So look at your own behavior before you start addressing others. I'll say that to members of the community, not the board or council. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, I believe Beth Hartman is on a phone number now. She sent a message. If you dial star six, you can unmute on the phone. Star six will unmute you. Okay, that's not working. While she tries to do that, I'm going to read the emails that I have for public comment. First one is from Cindy Brandon Wright Township. A tax increase at any percentage is not a win. Reintroducing a five dollar registration fee is not a win. It is on you to find the cuts. We see your Christmas tree. How much did that cost? We see your request for bids for window washing, new carpet renovations. Residents are paying costly car repairs because of your roads. They're leaving their trees darker or their normal outside decorations non-existent because of utility costs. They are not traveling to see their loved ones because of fuel costs or damaged vehicles on your roads. Their holiday meal is different this year. They're dealing with a loss in the family because of your opioid epidemic. Their family this year are all strangers due to your children and youth mess. Residents are upset because of your election mess, feeling like their voices aren't being heard at your podium by their emails and now at the polls. You do not seem to hear your residents instead of increasing taxes. Why don't you fire a few managerial positions and take control of the administration? You are responsible for a tax increase at any percentage is not a win. Reintroducing a five dollar registration fee is not a win. Next, Laura Panero from Wyoming. Residents have an expectation that questions asked of our elected officials in county administration will be answered honestly and promptly. This expectation has not been met. Hearing the role of the redevelopment authority causes our team to question what authority and knowledge your decisions are based upon. Alongback by residents, tax revenue for seventy five million dollars is not a decision to be voted upon lightly. It is time. You hold our county administration accountable to answers and transparency. It starts with the county manager that you're tasked with hiring. You must hold him or her accountable. He or she will then hold them the administration as a whole accountable. It is your job to understand the frustration and anger building in your fix issuance. I think that is it. Anybody else on the Zoom who could possibly try to speak? Let me just see what the messages are. Go ahead.
Today, I actually had a conversation with the former Director of Elections from long ago. Had a good conversation with him. Uh, I said today I had a a long conversation with the former director of the Bureau of Elections in this county. It was interesting that he brought up a case uh, when we were talking, that was actually, I think, adjudicated back in the Kevin Jordan days of of this county. Um, between the power struggles between the commissioners at the time, uh, it was Frank Cross and Lutowski, possibly Brad Jones. So I would like the Office of Law to check into this um, case because uh, I think Attorney Cosgrove served on the Board of Elections back then. And it was about buying, I guess, advisors for the election issues. Commissioners were against it. The board was for it. And in the end, the board prevailed over the commissioners that year. Uh, so I think, you know, maybe we should go back and look at that case. Because, you know, like I've been stating all along, it's been a power struggle between the board, the bureau, the administration. Obviously, council has has some comments and opinions uh, of the opinion that the Board of Elections has their own powers. They are quasi judicial board under the law. Uh, and when you, you know, DA comes in here and says that there, you know, there is a criminal provision in Title twenty five that says anybody that sort of uh, violates part of that law can face up to a year in prison and anywhere a thousand dollars fine. So, you know, I I think it behooves us that that we give the respective powers to that board. Uh, I am in the process of working on amendment to our county admin code. Wanting to actually take the department away from the executive branch of government and putting it in the own, in their own offices with, you know, office of the Board of Elections and Registration. Uh, they, giving them back their power, rightfully so, under Title twenty five, letting them follow the law. You know, uh, I've looked at other charters throughout the Commonwealth. Uh, they're not as muddy as ours. You know, I mean, their admin codes, their their charters are very short, sweet, to the point, pretty much says go directly to Title twenty five in less words. The only, I think, other county that really defines some of the responsibilities and duties of the bureau is Erie County. But still not as muddy as ours. Quite honestly, I think, you know, in that case, uh, if if you could find it, probably from those three, whenever the commissioners were not serving that year because they were running for public office, that I think was adjudicated back then.
You know the name?
Uh, it'd probably be Luzerne County Board of Elections versus Luzerne County Commissioners back then. And it had to do with purchase.
So five years.
Like advisors, yeah, because I think there were a lot of names I think on the ballot that year. Uh, because I think we were going through another charter at that time, right? A charter proposal, I think, back in oh three. And I think, you know, I had to deal with having some of the names on the ballot for privacy's sake. The, you know, board wanted those advisors and uh, board prevailed in the court case. And it was in our, in our own county. I think our own judges at the time. So I think we need some introspection to take a look at ourselves. And really, like rightfully so, I think, you know, the charter, a- as I've been saying all along, is documented on how we compose our government, how we put it together. You know, and then we as council appoint people to different ABCs, authorities, boards and commissions. Uh, and it's pretty hands-off at that point. And why is this board any different than LCTA and the Urban Authority? Then, you know, uh, redevelopment authority or any other board composed, we don't really meddle with them. I mean, they get to hire their own executive directors. They have their own budgets. Uh, we do give money to LCTA. Uh, I think give money to LCC. You know, and and it's pretty much hands-off. I mean, the way I envision the Board of Elections is that it's their responsibility under the law to create the budget, pass it off to the executive branch for us to approve, to give them the the funding necessary to conduct the election process. And at that point, it's pretty much in their hands. It's not really partisan at this point in time. And they're fully responsible for what happens and transpires in their own office. Uh, and I think, you know, that that will take us out of the mix except for passing the money. It'll take out, you know, if I was the executive, I really wouldn't want that responsibility because it's it's a bad light on, you know, the executive branch. He's there to execute policy procedures that they're actually supposed to be passing that resolution. And and I'm glad Ms. Williams is doing her homework because she did send us an email this past week where she's looked at past minutes of the Board of Elections and Registration where they actually used to pass resolutions on spending money. You know, back at the beginning of Home Rule. So, you know, what's changed in the Office of Law that they're making, you know, in in my opinion, bad opinions and giving us bad advice and realize they're not judges either. They their sole purpose is to protect us from liability. Give us advice, but we could say, thank you for giving us that advice, but we're gonna not follow it because our interpretation of law is slightly different. So we are elected officials. All of us here are sworn to Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of Pennsylvania. You know, the statutes that are federal and statewide and obviously the charter. But it's not a top or it's a top-down approach, not bottom-up. So, uh, quite honestly, I like this, in the next probably couple of weeks, I'll be proposing those changes and I hope to get the support of my colleagues to make those admin code changes to give the power back to where rightfully belongs.
Thank you, Mr. Urban. Any other members of the public? Sure. State your name and the municipality you reside in.
My name is Joe Grantee from Plains. Uh, first of all, I'd like to say that I support Alyssa. If known her short time, but I've never seen her do anything without the integrity at the highest level, being concerned for the law and the right way to do things in the election. The other thing I have a question about is I I received a notice today of a paper from the Luzerne County Election Bureau. Along with Dominion Bodie, will be begin logic and accuracy training testing on Wednesday, January fourth, twenty twenty-three, beginning at ten o'clock, one thirty-five, Water Street, Wilkes-Barre, Pennsylvania. The testing is open to the public. Building entrance via rear building. Um, I brought up a couple of times that I worked the polls that day and I reported and demonstrated that those machines were tampered with. Haven't heard anything about it. And for us to go forward with the same systems that we had problems with this time and last time is unbelievably negligent. And I ask you to do something about it and find a better way. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Grantee. Are there any other members of the public?
Motion second.
All favor? Extension. Meeting is adjourned at eight ten. We'll start at eight fifteen.
Get one under our belt.
Turn off your... I'm gonna finish chewing my cookie.
That would be, that would be really, that would be really good.
She's sick. She's sick.
No, I messed up there.
You've won. Are your mics on? Guys, it's 8:19. We're gonna call the work session to order. Where you did, yeah, make sure your mic's on. Right at the pledge of allegiance and moment of silence, we'll call Ms. Lawrence.
Mr. Bean.
Present.
Mr. Lewis Gavin.
Here.
Mr. Lombardo.
Here.
Mr. Dermott. Yeah.
Present.
Mr. Mitchell. Mr. Perry.
Here.
Mr. Thornton.
Here.
Mr. Urban.
Here.
Mr. Lovett.
Here.
Mr. Rayo.
Here. Okay, for additions and deletions, we're gonna remove item number four at the request of the manager and Ms. Pecora. And then for number three, the resolution is not ready. We can still discuss it if you'd like, or we can remove it and postpone the discussion to a future meeting.
I think we should really remove it if we don't have...
Yeah, we don't have the lease, we don't have a resolution. Okay. So removing three and four.
Motion to adopt the agenda as amended.
Second.
Other question, other question. Four, I'm okay with them. Three, if you move it tonight, then there's no discussion at all on a work session. And then there's a meeting Thursday, right, this week?
We're not put, this won't be on there.
So don't these leases have to be signed by the end of the year?
So, you know, we'll leave it on there because I think...
Well, I think you can go month to month.
They're gonna recommend month to month until we get, we don't, there's no lease and there's no resolution right now. So we'll leave it on there and just have the discussion and they could explain why they want to do month to month. If you wanted to leave that. So, all right, you still make the motion with the, just removing four. We'll just do a brief discussion for three. Motion second, good. All favor.
Aye.
Extensions. The agenda is adopted. Number one, receive and discuss budget reports for November 20.
I'll still take that one. In your packet is the budget report for November. In January, I'll transition this over to Mr. Alexander, if I'm still set up there. But everything's in your packet. You can always email me any questions. So if you have something now, I can try to answer it, but I know our focus has been on budget. And you've been working on it for yourself. So if you have anything, you can email it later.
Just a quick question.
Yeah, sure.
Anything crazy out of whack on the report?
I didn't see, but I, I'll be honest, I haven't spent much time. I've been between manager duties and getting Chris up to date on probably the finance and just this time of year in general.
Okay.
I looked at it for about 10 minutes before the meeting.
All right.
Thanks for your honesty.
Yeah, a big meeting at 4:00 too.
Yeah.
Better late than never.
All right, thanks, Mr. Swet. Number two, discussion regarding resolution approving the sales of certain parcel property held at repositor by Elite Revenue Solutions LLC acting as Luzerne County Tax Pay Girl.
Sub-67 property, better.
Liam, were you gonna speak to that?
I'll, well, the repository really aren't, doesn't have anything to do with the real estate community. But I did ask, Mr. Griffith, you and I were there, we went to Elite and asked that they send all the information on it. So that if you wanted to look into the properties, all that information would be there. A map of it, you know, any particulars, that's one in the packet. So honestly, if you have a question, it's gonna have to go back to Elite. Yeah, because it's like, that's great, but the list was not in detail.
All right, so you guys look it over. We'll hopefully get a detailed list. And if you have any questions, direct them to Manager Swetts and then we'll get them to Elite.
As a, I'm sorry.
No, we're waiting, waiting for more information from Elite. You're okay. You put everything, anybody has any...
Any detailed questions, you know, I, like I said, I would just refer to Elite. And I know it's a lot of information for them to send. Maybe it could be a separate packet. With a map, it would be quite large. But if anybody wants to go and look at these properties, it's beneficial.
I don't have a question, just a comment about that. Usually when I look at these and I see, you know, that there's lack of detail, which typically there has, there has been. I do just go to the Luzerne County GIS website, put the parcel number in. And oftentimes, you can go right to the address or you can do it manually. So if you want to just at least look at what the address is, that helps me a little bit. But typically, I mean, there's so many of them that, you know, I just maybe like look at one from each town or something like that. What's that? Oh, okay. Well, then, we will not be able to do that.
The one thing about the repository sales, though, these have all been through, you know, the judicial, the shares, all of that. They, nobody wanted them. So here they are.
That's a good point.
Thank you. Any other questions on that, item number two? All right, so moving on to three, we'll just have a brief discussion about the lease. Mr. Swetts or Attorney Skeen, I don't know who wants to speak to it, but you were recommending month to month on that until we have a lease?
Yeah, we only receive the lease, so when a division head wants to have property. We get, we don't get involved with whether or not it's a good idea, bad idea. That's their matter. But we only receive the addendum to this without the original whole lease on about Tuesday, Wednesday. So when we look into it, we have to get all these other leases to review it and come up. We think that it's a better idea to have a new lease because we don't like so long that we don't have like just one document to look at. So we are going to be working with the landlord to come up with a new lease. Based on what was the question.
We have on the agenda Thursday that's just, we go to month to month until the lease is finalized?
Add that to the agenda. We add that to the agenda, just we're okay with month to month until the lease is finalized for Thursday.
Just a resolution for that.
Okay, yeah, she'll just need to have it by tomorrow so that we're gonna do month to month.
The resolution.
Resolution saying that we're gonna do month to month. Okay, Mr....
I, I agree. Mr. Skeen, I think it's a good idea to get a new clean lease, something that's short, sweet, concise, to the point. And speaking a little bit of things that I've heard, there is, there's a lot of contingencies in that old lease. I don't think we're gonna retire ourselves to. In addition to that, I think, if I'm not mistaken, the numbers go up. So here we are fighting for 5,000 and 10,000 per year is going up quite a bit. So maybe we go back and hopefully renegotiate something.
I think the exact same thing. I have to imagine this is gonna increase, increase the budget since we were getting rid of this. I mean, I know it's children and youth, so it's not going to be as significant as...
I don't think it's gonna impact that much, but I think the point from the office of law, from my side, besides just getting it recently, is that you have three or four previous leases. It's cleaner just, it's not one lease and this is a then-to-mat. You know, and it was the office of law, but I support them 100%. If you have that many previous leases, I think you need like clean leasing.
So I have a question regarding that. Just, just I'm not sure exactly what you're referring to. So are you saying that in particular property, which I did read the information, there's several leases associated with that property with the same owner of the property?
Because of, not several leases because of the property, but because it's gone on so long. Each lease was just endemic. So whenever they signed a new one, they signed an addendum to the last.
But you're not talking about other leases around the county that are owned by other people?
No, 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 no.
Just one, take your role.
One land.
Oh, I see.
Did the term of the lease go up from four to five years? Did I see something about that?
There's a request for, we, we as the county...
It's current five.
Never get into the five-year lease. There was only one property left in the whole county. If we had it rented, because we needed to put people there, we might be at this advantage, have to do that. But five-year lease is a long-term lease. So that doesn't really count you. A one-year lease with three minutes, something like that. So we're available to breed for four years then. But the overall scope would be...
And the cost did go up from month to month, correct? Or, you know, what we're paying in rent?
No, the cost won't go up month to month. We'd have to make an adjustment after that.
Okay.
The cost will stay the same. And then we would make an adjustment if there's a new design. They would ask for adjustment to the time that we were... But let's say it's done in February.
Yeah.
Over. Then we would adjust it to add that little bit extra in one payment. Now, I also understand, again, I'm not resident, we're just renewing leases. But there was a punch in this prepared also for issues that needed to be repaired.
So if this isn't gonna cost us any more, why was the previous manager? I know you're speculating a bit, but what was the benefit of getting rid of it?
That had to do with management, office of human services, and the plan that they worked out. So it was gonna be a plan to...
See, I don't love the work from home. I think it hurts productivity, I really do. But I also don't want the costs going up. And I feel like if they can do the hybrid, I don't want to pay way more money. I'd rather do the hybrid, and I really would. You know, it's depending on what the cost increases.
Yeah. So there was, there was an issue of, you know, we hired new people. We're on the, on the slope going up. And the position is advertised as a worker position. Now, if you then say we're now taking everyone in and you lose a bunch of employees, then that's gonna be a bad result to you. So I don't know how, you know, what changes they're gonna make to make this all work. But that's not me. But, you know, we don't, you guys don't, as council, tell people that are, you know, department heads what they have to do or where they're gonna have to do their business. And I don't, I'm only doing documents, making sure everything's right, and then they make their decisions. That tells them.
I'm not sure, though, with the current license. So provisional is the best time to make drastic change in every department, start working for home. Even though there is a risk cost, I think with that type of work, you have to work from...
It's also their recommendation, too. That's what they want.
And well, and also, they've been working with the state. And they're working with consultants, they're working with... So what they're doing for employees and people working at home is all stuff that has been approved by the region.
When you say they, John...
Well, it's the department recommendation.
That this is what they want you to say.
That's what, yeah, that's what...
Yeah, so it was my understanding, it was my process, me and Randy. He was gonna move them independent places. And then we would receive, well, this is what he said to me. And he was gonna benefit from the, the match back being paid to us.
I don't know.
Does it sound? I'm just... I don't see how you could bill for building you're not using. Again, I'm not the children expert on that, but... Well, no, I'm saying if we were to move them. Yeah. I think that's what, at least that's what he talked about.
So for now, the office of law, I'm sorry to interrupt. The office of law just has to work on getting us a lease. So right now, we don't have one to vote on. So I think we just go month to month until they come up with one, an agreement, and then, you know, we could discuss it.
I do want to just finish by saying this. I agree with Mr. Mitchell that this is not the best time to make that kind of change. But also, I know we don't expect department heads, we don't direct them what to do.
And if they're in court, they can have a hearing a day, or they can be in front of a master, and you can have one hearing in the morning, one in the afternoon. So I don't know how many, what times they have to be in to be out. I know supervisors are provided in. And they would be, you know, working inside and be able to have the supervisor. And then. And it's also including the area agency on aging. It's an app only just, yeah, so we don't want them working on this. I don't.
They have been, though, is my understanding, they've been working for a while now, is that correct, Terry?
I understand that the only agencies have had.
My whole thing is I don't wanna pay more money when we've been doing it a certain way without significant issue.
Well, that, that particular lease has paid 100%.
Well, the aging part would be 100%. Right. The children and youth is a different percentage.
Right.
I also wanna say just to Mr. Herbert's comment, that I personally have an issue with paperwork being at people's personal homes, their internet, and, you know, their personal internet connections, and the security functions of that. That's one thing that I really had a concern with, and I actually spoke to Ms. Hill at length about that. And she didn't really say anything to confirm that I, my, my fears or anything like that, but I just, that's something I was very concerned about.
And I agree with you, John, because I brought that up to Randy.
Yeah.
That was one of my biggest concerns, that information's not in the wrong hands unintentionally, we're running a hook for it.
Especially in that department.
Yeah.
Item number five is discussion regarding the council meeting schedule, it's attached, it's the last item in your packet. Please just look it over, I mean, I, I'll be honest, there were so many things in the packet, I didn't check holidays and elections and things like that. So if you guys just wanna double-check it, look it over for the next meeting, and if there's anything.
The only statement I'll make on that, and I don't know if the others would even consider it. We, we always seem to be under this big crunch to get everything out, Sharon has to get everything out on Friday afternoon, and then there's late things coming over Saturdays and Sundays and Mondays, sometimes things are quickly thrown on. I just think everything would be easier if the meetings were Wednesday nights, not Tuesdays, that's, that's all I can say.
Well, here's the, I will tell you that we have a deadline to get everything for the agenda, if you look, by the Wednesday before the meeting. Sharon and I get things Friday morning. And most of the time when we do get them, and this is not a testament, like, to anybody in the administration, it just happens, like, we'll have half of something, it won't be completed. Or like, even with outside vendors, administrations waiting to get them. Sharon and I, even like, are the normal, like, you know, Harry, or sorry, Tracy, sorry. Mr. Swet, like, we are, we're trying our best to get everything by Wednesday, and still Sharon's sending emails on Friday morning, like, these things are missing.
So could it be easier if we had meetings Wednesday, would that make your job easier?
No, because then they'd wait till Monday.
Honestly, if your meeting is Sharon's, maybe not mine, but, I mean, if it's not urgent, if it's not, oh, no, it's gotta be voted on, you can just cut it off, like, hey. You don't have a Thursday in the day, absolute latest, it's not going on unless, that needs to be voted on on Tuesday.
Which we do, I think.
You've done that as much as you could, but. But we also have divisions where they get information at the last minute, or they can get this, a certain grant, and they bring it to us on Monday or Tuesday, and they want it on the next meeting. So we talked about it on Wednesday, tried to get onto the next meeting, because they don't have it done. So we wanna be more stringent and say, these are the rules, you don't have here, but if they get it, you're going to have some people who are linked to the name, and they're willing to, it's just not getting done.
Mr. Skey and Mr. Swet, and Ms. Lawrence, one easy way to do it, if it doesn't get there by Thursday, it's not on.
Okay.
Be surprised.
We tried that, we tried, we tried it. The fir-, my first, like, month of share, I was like, if I don't have it by this deadline, it's getting cold. And then the sky was falling, and if my, this doesn't get past, this is gonna. So, I mean, if you guys, if I have the support of all of you to just start cutting stuff from the agenda, I'll do it, but it's, it's not, you know.
You said the end of it.
To every, but to every department that it, it is, and when it comes to us, by the time they get it to us, it's urgent. And they have a million reasons of why it needs to be voted on, and we do pull what we can. I, I, if it's not completely urgent, we have a meeting Wednesday morning, we go through, pull it, make it a handout, pull it, make it a handout, we have all this, we have all that. So we do pull what we can. But when, you know, the division head, the department head, the administration, the Office of Law, when anybody's like, hey, we really should get this on, then we, we do squeak it fast.
One time, be surprised the next time.
I'm gonna have to get you the t-shirt that says, emergency on your part doesn't count, it's just an emergency on our part.
There's one day, I don't know if anybody cares, I don't care, it's February 14th, so that falls on a Tuesday. Don't know if anyone has.
Why, what's that day?
Doesn't matter to me, I'm just throwing it out there.
As long as it's not March 17.
No. Okay, well, we could, but you could potentially.
This is the, we have Thursday as our last meeting for 2022, correct? Yeah, all right, I just, I wasn't sure, I wasn't sure.
Don't say it out loud.
I don't know, when would we schedule that?
All right, any members of the public that wish to see? Guys, also, really quick announcement, the Thursday meeting, we do have a meeting to vote on just a couple things. We can, if, if there is a big snowstorm, we can waive the requirement that a majority of council be in person, we did it during COVID, we could do it. You know, if it's really bad and you guys wanna be virtual, we can, we can make it virtual, in a pinch. Mr. Knapp?
Ron, not from that, it goes. Listen, I wanted to drill this home, because I've been watching from home, Zoom, and I can feel a sense of council. Our manager, they want to broadcast this ARP money, okay? This is the way to do it, it's a sure thing, because these individuals who receive incentive checks, who remanded to their homes off the job. They fall within the parameter of lost revenue. And if you really wanna make good. You don't have to back pay them for this rain tax fee. Okay? You could just cease and desist it with an amendment to the ordinance. And say, pull the money from ARP and pay forward from the ARP money, those people who fall within the qualification. I know when, when the decision was trying to be pitched off to CEO or weatherization program. All the questions were, how do we figure this out? Well, this is too easy, this is too easy, easy fast. The second thing I wanted to say is I compliment council in respect to keeping with a great credit score. And the decisions that were made tonight show that is absolutely necessary. In my household, my credit score, FICO score is 855. It pays dividends. Banks do, or they pay me to do business with them. It doesn't cost me interest anywhere, anyhow. That's where Luzern County wants to be. In that position, if ever disaster strikes. Lastly, let's keep Christ in Christmas, as many as possible come out to the choir singing on Saturday. Merry Christmas, everyone.
Thank you, Mr. Knapp, Merry Christmas. What choir?
The, they're organizing a choir two in the afternoon in front of the courthouse for singing Christmas.
Thank you, no. We might get an email about it before the end of the week, but thank you, Mr. Knapp. I think, guys, we have a motion adjourned?
Motion adjourned.
All favor?
Aye.
Oh, wait, wait a minute. Wait, actually, we're adjourned, but. No, we're adjourned, but do we have a?
I still have a lot more to enter.
Okay.